Okay, Chairman Dial, we are live on Facebook and we are live on Zoom.
Excellent. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, January 18th regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order at this point and then start with a roll call as we customarily do. Mr. Kearney is present. Mr. Carr is not here. Ms. Anand?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
And Mr. Dial, here. We have a quorum of four out of five of the members of the committee, and so we will proceed. And now we'll move to the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So we have a cool meeting tonight. We've got some very distinguished invited guests, not the least of which Charlie Langkow, who's our new school committee liaison, we'll be hearing from him in a moment. But I did want to start off by addressing our continuing challenges that we have with regard to transportation. I know an email went out today, and I understand that there's continued frustration among families and students about how the transportation system is working. I can assure you that the administration and the committee are well aware of the limitations. We are working through possible solutions. The challenge is that we, along with many other districts in the state, are facing significant staffing issues. There's just not, we're not able to find a lot of people to drive buses. We have buses, the buses work, we have routes that are mapped out, we have everything, but the human beings that are able to do that, and human beings are human beings. And so there are times when that say, we need to build a little more resiliency, I'll say. And so we do have a plan to do this. This is not an issue that is, this is a priority issue for us. So please, we appreciate your patience as we're working through these challenges, and we are hoping to get better in the near term and not long term. And so with that, I will see Ms. Wonga, Dr. Sullivan, public comment at this point. This is the area of the agenda where we open the floor for public comment about items not on the agenda. If you have comments on a piece of... But for right now, this is a point for things that you want to raise that's not already on the agenda. A couple beats for that. Hearing none? Excellent. So hearing none, that'll move us to our next item on our agenda, the invited guests. We have three special invited guests here. The first is our new school committee student liaison, and then we have our elected representatives for our district to come talk to us about legislative updates and what's happening within the district. So but first, we'll start with Mr. Langkow, our school committee liaison, to tell us how it's going on with the schools. So, Dr. Sullivan, I can turn to you first and then...
Yeah, well, no, that's wonderful. I was just going to introduce Charlie Langkow, who's a junior here. And you've all met him because of his presenting with other members of the superintendent's advisory council. But Charlie has not had an opportunity yet to be a liaison. He is, I think, his inaugural liaison opportunity. Charlie's a wonderful kid. Now, just maybe start, Charlie, by telling us a little bit about some of the things you're involved with, and then I'll leave it to you to give the update.
So I have been, I'm a junior here at Cohasset High School. And I've been in Cohasset schools since I was in kindergarten, so odds go through now. So it's been a wonderful experience. And so I guess to start with the sports that I do here, I am a captain of the cross-country team in the fall, and I'm also a captain of the tennis team in the spring. And then some clubs I do are the debate team, the math team, and medical club. And so to move on, kind of my personal note here on like the school atmosphere, I would say, right now, we're in kind of that middle stretch of the year, we're after the holiday break. I think everyone's, safe to say, everyone's settled in, but we're before kind of the February break and the April breaks and then summer. So I think with this kind of middle time of the year comes a ramping up of the academics in all of my classes, and especially as quarter two is ending on January 27, and we're ushering in quarter three. And so I would say overall, students are handling it very well. They're using each other and cooperating during times like utility, during our school period, to work on some of these challenges in our classes, and this is very encouraging to see. And me personally, for my classes, I know that for this quarter, we're kind of starting a, we used to have midterms and then kind of went away from them, and now we're going back to them. And so for my classes, there's no official midterms. And so I would say overall, students, in my experience in my grade, are too, too worried about their midterms, which is good to hear. And then moving on to sort of athletics and arts, I could go on forever on these, but I'll keep it short. So one thing, after talking with like kind of a representative of each sports team, I would say the biggest highlight is our hockey team, which is undefeated. And they are having a tough matchup against Norwell this Saturday, and so I look forward to seeing how they'll do. And then for the arts, we're wrapping up the successful fall with productions such as Moana, and we're brainstorming new ideas for what we can do in the spring and the rest of this winter. And the chorus and band is having an all-school concert coming up in March, which I'm looking forward to. And then moving on to National Honor Society, I know that we actually, at the end of this quarter, so January 27, members are having a 10-hour check-in to make sure that they're getting all their hours in. And so students are busy volunteering in the community to get those hours in. And on top of their chapter service requirement, as is referred to, each member is required to run and conduct an individual service project, their ISP. And this is something they do once that they remember their junior year, and then once again, their senior year. And so students are also underway with their ISPs, working hard to create whatever meaningful change that their project is going after. I'll quickly mention my individual service project is I'm running a youth sports equipment drive for the families of Cohasset. And so I was actually just working on it a few hours ago. We're setting up the collection boxes downtown, and we're going to have that open. I have a flyer right here that I could pass around. Donation is being accepted January 9 through March 26, when we're going to sell all of the equipment at reduced price at the Help Duck Fair, and the proceeds will go to the social service of Cohasset, which is, I'm excited to see get that underway. And so moving on to some positives, I would say, about the school in general, it's just funny, I was talking to Mr. Kearney about this a second ago, the school lunches, I would say. And people might think that it's insignificant, but I think it's definitely not, because whatever we're fueling our bodies with is going to impact how we learn and how our days go in general. And the school lunches across the board have been much, much better. Everyone is really loving the school lunches, which is always good to see. People are happier at lunch, because just to go specifically, the variety of choices has increased exponentially. We've been having, there's so many meal choices that no one could ever be unhappy, I think, and that really makes sure that everyone is getting what they want and what looks good to them.
We enjoyed it, Charlie. I don't let you know, but we had a dinner.
Oh, really?
Yes.
How do you like the snack room?
The snack? I was going to mention that actually...
Sorry, we should have...
No, it's okay.
You don't have the floor, guys. The floor is right there.
I appreciate it. So I think in the past, especially this fall, there's been kind of traffic issues in the cafeteria, because we have kind of a small cafeteria and confined kind of lunch area where you buy your food. And so it's been, if there's like a popular meal, like tacos are quite popular, there'll be a huge line, and it kind of jams everything in that room. But recently, maybe two weeks ago or so, we kind of used repurpose what I think was a teacher lunchroom or something into kind of the new cashier place where you check out, and that helps so much, because now students can physically get their trays in the lunchroom and then move into the separate kind of room for snacks, waters, and checkout. So that's been very encouraging and a great change, I think, for everyone's day at school. And then moving on to one thing that I think could maybe be addressed in my personal experience would be teacher office hours, because as I mentioned, utility is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to meet with teachers and kind of get that extra help that you can't cover in class. But sometimes I feel like utility isn't quite enough to kind of get all those questions answered, let's say. And especially for those of us who are members of certain clubs, clubs often meet during these utility periods, during the day, which is a half-an-hour block. And so if you have a club meeting, let's say, on Thursday, utility, you can't see that teacher who you've been meaning to see for that question you have. So I would say, and this is not directed towards any teachers in particular, but overall, maybe kind of reinforcing that, that students really appreciate, like after school, even before school, even like 15 minutes can make a big difference. So that says something that I think can maybe be improved on a little bit. And then one last thing is, for my period three here at school, I've been helping out the librarian, Ms. Rudi, in this beautiful library here. And one of my biggest projects has been reading out old books. And I know that the committee here has seen some books come through in the past. And so I can tell you that I've been working on a whole tray somewhere over there of 176 books that are either damaged, or they are on topic, subject matters that have been updated and we can get new books for. And so just kind of preparing you that that will be coming your way. I put a lot of time into making sure that we're not just getting rid of any old book. These books really don't serve a purpose anymore in the library. Getting rid of them can kind of clear the way. Books. That's all I have. I'm open to any questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Super Chair. Mr. Kearney, any questions?
I said we have really good kids in Cohasset. I wanted them, and thank you, Charlie, for all you do. I just, I gotta say, too, that this is such a good exchange, because it's really telling us what we're looking for. We are currently working on some after-school programs, not just learning, but also for sports. So we're going to be addressing that pretty soon with the wellness committee as well. It meets on the 24th, I believe. So I just wanted to update you on that. Because we are listening to the budget, and we have time to get that done as soon as possible. Mr. Tony, he's already talked about the stifling for the, you know, for the wind room and then for this room, too. Yeah, now, are you doing a sport now, because the cross-country?
Yeah, so right now, I'm actually doing, not with the school, tennis twice a week at the Weimann Club in Weimann, to kind of get ready for the spring season.
Yeah, and we're just trying to help advocate to fit this out, too, as well.
Right.
Do you think that would really help?
Definitely, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. For the record, Mr. Carr has joined. Welcome, Mr. Carr. You want to have the floor for any questions for our new...
Thanks very much. That was the most lightweight to ask us for something around here. So folks, we're in. Thank you for what you're doing. I'm sorry.
Ms. Anand?
Thank you for such a comprehensive update. I feel like you're everywhere in town, Charlie. Just like a wreck, picking up my turkey truck bid, Charlie's there, sports stuff, turkey truck bid in November, so not just, but... We both trotted, Charlie and our superfoot. But you're everywhere, and I'm so impressed by how much you're doing and how much you seem to be fitting into each day. And then coming here with such a well-planned-out agenda to update us on is really helpful. I feel like you touched on kind of everything we're wondering about, and so we look forward to many more updates with you. And you're a junior, right?
I am.
So we get you for more than just this year. Okay, good. Charlie, thank you so much.
Mr. Sir, you'll shut it here on graduation, Charlie.
Probably. I mean, you all know what the graduation cry is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Charlie, thanks so much. It's my personal, personally, my favorite part of the meeting, to hear student representatives. And I have to say, we've had some great updates in the past from our students. That has to have been the most articulate, well-organized, and comprehensive student update, I think, that I've heard since I've been up to committee.
Says this every time. I'm just kidding.
Until next week. Exactly, exactly. But for the interruption. And whatever Mr. Kearney paid you to give a plug about food, you could have gotten double, just to let you know. But, but thank you so much. It's really actually very helpful to hear about sort of every facet of the school operation from a student's perspective, and most of, of utmost interest is the critique. So the issues that need to be addressed, you can see probably every one of us wrote that down when you said that. So I'm very interested in that. I'm really genuinely interested in hearing student feedback. So the more that you can get information like that shared with us, the better. Okay? Thank you so much. All right.
Yes, thank you very much. I agree with everyone. Great presentation. And Vice Chair McCollum stole most of the things I was going to say. So very good, even with the Dr. Sullivan interruption. One question I wanted to ask that we heard from several student representatives, like your perspective on it as well, is there's, there has been articulated through the committee concerns about homework volume and stress.
It's, that's a internet connection issue. It's on now.
I would highly recommend that anyone come in person for the student updates.
Yeah, it was definitely on, because I noticed there was some issue earlier.
We talked earlier.
Yeah.
So, so excellent. So we'll move on to our next agenda item. We'll invite Senator Patrick O'Connor and Representative Jones, you know, to talk us a little bit about what's going on in the legislative front. For those who don't know, and as you should though, these are our elected representatives representing us in Beacon Hill. And what's great for me personally is I've not ever seen them in three dimensions. This is, this is a real pleasure, and I very much appreciate your willingness to attend our school committee meeting and give us a little take of what's going on. And so my thought is just to give you the floor, and I know you've got some stuff to talk about from a general legislative perspective, and I'll just turn it over to the committee for any particular questions that we might have that works for you.
Sounds great. And it's very nice to meet you in person. And yes, I really am six feet tall. That's a wonderful covert moment when people are like, I had no idea, because I don't live, see?
Yes.
Six feet tall. And just before we get started, I do just want to comment. I thought Charlie's report was excellent. And one of the things he brought up that I just want to highlight is broadband hours for teachers. That's the bread and butter of what we do. And you always hear us say at the end of this presentation is that constituent services is our top thing, and we regularly hold office hours. And the reason we do that is because sometimes it is a barrier. When you have a title, you go, you get looked, you go between Jones, between Rasmussen, and somewhere in that moment, that creates a barrier. And so to have an office hour or a time when people, students, or just regular constituents can swing by and either talk to us directly or our wonderful staff, that informal moment of like, I just always wanted to ask you this, or it didn't want to bother you is something I hear a lot. I don't know how you feel about it, but I feel like those office hours are just even a great time for people to just validate or bounce off, or just to say hello and get to know us a little bit, so that we're not as scary or just at that distance, and to try to close that gap more into person. So I thought that was a great idea that he gave to you. I just kind of recommend that you think about how that might, how that might work inside of schools.
Also... I'll say hello as well, and just thank you for the invitation to be here. Both Rep. Muschino and I have done this three times now, hang on, Paul, and now Cohasset, to try and just provide an update on sort of what's going on in Beacon Hill. We're in the process right now of filing bills. So last week and this week is the mad rush to file all the bills or to make them in on time to get docket numbers and bill numbers without having to do a late file. So that's been the main crux of our work since getting sworn in a few weeks ago. It's been really reaching out to the community, seeing what types of pieces of policy and legislation that they want us to file, some of the issues and problems that might need solving inside of the community we represent, and the larger statewide picture that we're trying to continue to move Massachusetts forward. And I think the report, just to give you sort of the, some of the clip notes before we go into it, Massachusetts is in an era of tremendous prosperity, I think, unlike we've ever seen before. This is reflected both in the 14% state income tax return that we were able to do, triggered by 62F, Chapter 62 F tax return last year, as well as the increased amount of resources, financial resources, we've been able to provide our communities and our public education system. So we're very excited about where the future, what the future holds for Massachusetts, and especially our communities that we represent. We have the great honor of being able to go up on Beacon Hill and cast votes on, on your behalf, on the community's behalf, on the school district's behalf. So we feel forever grateful for that privilege, and we know that all the work that we do is really centered towards building community, because I think that's been the thing that has been the most successful in Massachusetts, has been legislators that go up to Beacon Hill and look out for the towns they represent, cities they represent, and then bring back the resources for all of you to do the real work here in our school districts and in our town. So that's what, what we've been really geared on, on achieving, both previous sessions as well as the sessions we move forward, especially given the financial picture of the state.
I'd just add that both of us have been local elected officials ourselves, selectmen, the city councilmen, and, you know, we really do understand how state aid influences, and you'll see some of the details here. And it's information that's really accessible, but, but I always think it's nice when we put it together, because one of the things it shows is that there is a deep commitment, both individually as representative and senator, but also right now, I'm being told to support our communities and that municipal aid, Chapter 70 money, has, we've really done our best, and it's always on the top of our minds when we're speaking with ways and means, and we're advocating budgets, and we're thinking about legislation, how to really make those kinds of investments in our communities, in our school systems. That's what unlocks all of the potential for great students like Charlie. So I think that's another broad theme as we walk through this, that I think is really important. And I guess the last thing I would just say is, we're thinking about this, is that we do have excellent relationships with your superintendent, actually with all the superintendents in our, in our districts. And so as we are a resource to you, we also are grateful to have a wonderful resource with superintendents in all the districts, but in particular Cohasset. Anytime we call them, like, this is still coming, or there's this issue, or someone's brought this to my attention, immediately I get back explaining it, how it relates, why it's important to the district. So having that form, that relationship with you is completely numbers, but also with your, with your staff.
We equally appreciate it.
Should we, do you want to walk, should we walk through some of that?
Sure, and we did send a digital copy of this as well, so if you'd like to throw it up on the website or, or, you know, wherever. But the budget recap, so our fiscal year is middle, halfway through. Last year's fiscal year budget was $52.7 billion, obviously a record for the amount of money that we're able to spend. It incorporates an upgrade of $39.6 billion as a tax revenue forecast. That forecast has already been exceeded right now by benchmark, by about $1 billion through December of 2022. And we'll see what the future months hold, and typically April is the biggest month with taxes coming in, but it's looking like the same as last fiscal year, that we're going to exceed benchmark and exceed revenues. Stabilization funds at $7.35 billion, it's the most it's ever been. When Governor Baker took over office in 2014, stabilization funds were on $1 billion. So we've been able to grow that at a clip of the boat, just under $1 billion a year. Education funding in particular, $1.18 billion for early education and care sector. The new Student Opportunity Act fund balance will be at $500 million. So the Student Opportunity Act, which we were able to pass the November of 2019, is already three years in, it's fully funded. We have now set aside $500 million of money. A lot of it's combined from surplus revenue as well as federal dollars to make sure that if there's ever any economic downturn, that the Student Opportunity Act has a reserve in place now to fund it, to make sure that the state keeps its commitment, especially to the most economically challenged school districts in the state, that we're able to provide them resources, financial resources they need, to continue to do the work that they're doing. The Student Opportunity Act actually has exceeded, I think, the expectations of even the school districts, that now some of the school districts, Lynn in particular, is saying that they're getting a significant amount more revenue than they ever anticipated to get, and that they're looking to potentially do infrastructure upgrades with some of the Student Opportunity Act money, which to me also shows a sign that I believe that there is an opportunity to expand the Student Opportunity Act to not just the most economically challenged school district, but some gray area school districts, as well as in school districts that have major challenges that are presented to them in certain areas, such as charter school reimbursements or special education out-of-school placements, things, things like that. 100, so total Chapter 70 money was $6 billion, an increase of $495 million over the previous fiscal year. Cohasset's take of that was just under $2.9 million. $110 million for a year-long extension of the universal school meals. This came after the federal government locked in partisan divisions, weren't able to extend school meals for children. The state of Massachusetts, the legislature basically said, it's our obligation to do this, and we're going to fund it for another, another year. It's our anticipation that this is going to be continued to be funded from here on out by the state until the federal government is able to coexist and figure out how to successfully pass legislation like that. 89, 82.1 million for regional school transportation, $29.4 million for Metco, $441 million for special education circuit breaker, which is the 75% that we typically like to give school districts. With that said, we have seen the emails that have come in from the Superintendent's Association as well as the School Committee Association about out-of-school placements going up approximately 14%. It's our goal to work inside of next year's budget to address those issues with them going up. And we have been in communication with a lot of the stakeholders, both on the out-of-school districts, schools themselves, as well as our school districts, to make sure that that increase isn't felt by cutting services in some other area of the budget instead of our schools. So we're doing as much as we can to try and cover that 14%. And then the last is charter school reimbursement, $243.8 million. And this is a real lifeline to some of the communities in our district that have a lot of children that they, that choose to go to charter schools, social charter in particular, that they're able to get a higher reimbursement now because of the Student Opportunity Act. So that kind of encompasses all of the education spending that the state did, as well as just a quick snapshot of the overall budget.
And I just want to pause for people listening at home, the Student Opportunity Act really is a transformative piece of legislation that was looking at Chapters 9, Chapter 10, Chapter 70, public funding, and why it's so important is because it's really about building equity into how we fund school districts and from the state's perspective, and really uplifting and helping other school districts that can't keep pace like, like certain ones. So to really, to really close that gap and to build that equity. And it's really about just acknowledgement that it's... And it's really about just acknowledgement that it takes a lot more money to educate more children who live in poor districts. We all have property in our districts, but it's children and property who are living in a poor district. And so what, when, when the Senator referred to the funding, the legislature paced itself so that whole funding achieved under that act would take six years. And so even through COVID, we committed, we knew that education was the important priority. And we have continued to make those investments and also to take some of the federal dollars and, and the good fortune that we have right now in terms of our, you know, robust economy to hedge against that. But I think it's important to also note that there were other pieces of it that do reach into school districts like our, and you know, Cohasset, what have you, in terms of helping on some of the retirements and health insurance. And so there, there are other pieces of it, all of which type of is on sort of this, this transformative piece. So it really is about, about transforming. One thing I will just note is on the Chapter 70 formula, it is still heavily weighted to reflect declining enrollment, which is less of a problem here, but like COVID, for example, is struggling with this. So I, I do just want to sort of say that out loud. And then the other thing I just think, whenever we're talking about funding and the economy, just keep in mind that right now, a lot of our economic force and churn is because we are making investments through federal dollars into our economy. And the hope is that that, that is, we saw it, right? We see it playing out that it is for the economy and that we are getting those revenues. But I would just remind you that whenever that kind of, again, transformative investment spending stops, we don't want to see a cliff effect. So just as school committee members, just I know you all understand your finances and your budgets and how these things develop, a lot of the monies that come through for the federal government right now relative to COVID are one-time monies. And so just keep those things in the back of your mind as you're thinking about it. But the commitment is clear from at least the two of us and from the legislature right now. We'll continue to advocate for that. The second page just reflects a little bit, slightly more of a little context on some of the other municipal aid. And it's 1.2 billion in funding for unrestricted general government aid. That goes to general operations on the town side of things, opposed to the school side of things. And Cohasset was awarded this time $595,000 for the unrestricted general government aid. And then of course, as Patrick said, the Chapter 70 was 2.8 million. We just thought you'd like to know a few of the other things that we're doing. So we included some of the local, local initiatives. So we were able to get $75,000 this year in the FY '23 budget, this budget right now, to establish a new regional sustainability officer, which we're sharing between Cohasset and Hingham. So that was pretty exciting to be able to uplift the town's leadership to work in climate. And you guys really do lead in, in these areas. Your alternative energy committees are doing a tremendous job. And then there was $50,000 for a grant to complete the ADA self-evaluation transition plan. $25,000 for Cohasset food pantry through the economic development bond bill. $25,000 for the Cohasset senior center, also the economic development bond bill and ten million in transportation bond bill for 3A safety improvements. We all know how important that piece of roadwork is. And it also adds $7.5 million to create some security for that purpose. So you know, sometimes you have to resecure these ones, these ones. So, yeah. So it's, it's just some examples of some of the things that we do locally. Actually, I know we should share them. So we were together earlier today at the State House, the Mass Centers for the Book. They, I don't know how familiar you are, but since we're saying the library, we have to mention it. And what they do is they award, give out awards to Massachusetts authors. And today, a Cohasset author got one of the honors awards. It was Catherine Sherbrooke. And she had, she had written a novel, Leaving Coys Hill. And she received the Honors in Fiction Award. And so we're able to present the awards area together and to give her citations as well. So I just thought we should say that because local offices are here, so you never know who you're sitting next to in the library. And since you're sitting in a library and the Mass Center for the Book really does a lot of work to, just to promote Massachusetts authors and lifelong learning and reading and any child or parent that's living at home, all you have to do is if anyone says, I am bored, you should just go and take a look at their website at the tremendous list of reading that's there. So I just thought we should, we should just uplift that while we're here as well. Congratulations, Sarah.
The next two pages are just, so slides to reflect Cohasset and the budget. As you can see, between Chapter 70 and unrestricted general governmental aid, the increase from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23 is approximately 8% of a change from the previous year. Our hope is to always, always make that more than it was the year before. A lot of times this got stuck during economically challenging times where it would be about 3% every single year in both, in both of those categories. Our hope is to continue to get more Chapter 70 money. We understand that prices are going up for almost everything, that health insurance is going up, that the cost of salaries are going up and that incremental increases need to be, need to go up as well and to reflect those, those changes in the environment and the, and the economy. And then just from fiscal year '16 to where we are right now, as far as a, a flow, a flow chart goes of where we were in Chapter 70 money through all those past fiscal years.
And then of course, we did include a slide, just to refresh your recollections, about the SR money that has come in. And it was just a great opportunity to make those investments and tackle COVID and get money into the hands of you here at the local level who know what you need and know how best to use it. So I really feel like Cohasset upheld itself pretty well because there were some pretty tight requirements about getting money and what you did with it. So, but we know it's all to good use. So we're glad to be able to pass that along through our committee delegation.
And then some legislation we passed in regards to public education, we signed, and we passed and signed a law, the Student Nutrition Bill, which does a, a lot of things, but one of the most important things it does is if any child accrues any sort of debt inside of the process of buying breakfast or buying lunch, that it's, it's completely waived. This also maximizes all of the opportunities that we have with all the federal programs to go in and do more comprehensive data collection and audits for our school districts to try and get as many federal dollars as we can, put them into a pocket of money, bucket of money, and then use that to basically reimburse a lot of the school districts for expenses that they've accrued in waiving debt or doing other things to help children who are of low income. And so it's a, it's a great bill that I think is, was long overdue. It's been something that has been referred to as breakfast before the bell. It's been something that, that people have been working on for quite some time up on Beacon Hill. So I was glad that we were able to get it done. I do think that COVID really shined a light on that and the food insecurity that so many kids were experiencing during that period of time. And that's the main push, I would say, for why we were able to get that done in the last legislative session. But it's done, it's signed into law and now it's, it's what we're doing as far as a policy of the state.
One of the other pieces we signed into law was genocide education. And it's a requirement to start to build in, in some of the supports to build curricula and to do training and certifications around this. And it's directly responsive to some of the challenges that we've had in terms of hate speech, increased issues along those lines. So it's, it's, I actually was really pleased to see that we passed this one. It was something I think that we've all benefited from in terms of, especially since Cohasset has such a commitment to diversity and equality inclusion. It really does fit with, with what you're already doing here as well. So it's really meant to develop curriculum materials. It's meant to, you know, to provide supports for educating teachers and to bring that to the part of the school climate and what you're teaching, what you're already teaching here. But I think it's important sometimes to say these things in a structured way and, and an intentional, purposeful way. So, yeah, so that was another piece that we were able to get into law this, this session.
Just to follow up on what the rep said too with genocide education. So this is the second consecutive legislative session that we've had that we've been able to get a mandate in place as far as public education. The first one was civics, the next one was genocide. We hope not to mandate, you know, all of this education, but what we're doing is we're trying to look at some of the statistics that have been presented to us as far as, as our, as our residents get older, where are they lacking and where can we use public education? Because public education in, in my view right now is complete wraparound services for, for children. It's no longer just a place where children go and get educated. I mean, you heard from Charlie earlier, what all of the, all of those kids are involved with. And then there's so much more, especially for the kids that have additional needs. So we appreciate what you, what you've been doing there. And one of the things that we're trying to get done this year is financial literacy. I think that that's been one that's been on the forefront for a while now. And because we did civics and then genocide, we, we didn't want to overmandate. And so we hope that this is going to be the year that we're able to get that done. And one of the, the budget amendments that we were able to pass last year in the Senate was to get $500,000 to assist in the professional development of teachers. And this is going to be opening up soon. We can give you the information. The State Treasurer's Office has the, has the money. And what they're going to be doing is giving teachers $500 for a virtual class to try to incorporate financial literacy in the current curriculum that they have. And then from there, you know, hopefully have that be the, the starting point of this being a major conversation about having this be a mandate in the future to, to have this inside of our schools.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Will the state be providing options for classes to take, I know like when dyslexia screening became, required, the state developed classes and offers them to teachers. And so will there be specific courses offered through the state or will it just be other? I mean, I know there are other.
On genocide or on?
I guess, I guess, financial literacy, but also genocide. I just think it's really nice when the state offers something that directly connects instead of just having to go out and find it somewhere else.
No, that's what I took away from, to make sure that the development curriculum was out at first. Because I think that was what they were looking to do is really to put something out there and then to back that up with teacher training as well. And, and so that it can really be incorporated. I don't want to say easily, but at least facilitated.
It makes a huge, I was able to take advantage of dyslexia, of course, that the state developed, offered and many of my colleagues were as well. And it made a huge difference in our ability to, to do what was being asked of us. So.
Was that how they wrote, so the Senator mentioned civics. Was that the, the format that they used when they wrote that piece, that requirement down as well? I don't even know.
I'm not sure.
So because there's been a gap now between COVID, just like took a memory.
So weird.
But I will say, but I, I will say that I have just like this gap. But I will just say that on the civics, and I, I know you've explained this as well, the students of the projects and outreach they've done to our offices is tremendous. It's absolutely tremendous. And some of the things that they brought to us and just different ways that, different students, different classes, different schools approach it has really been interesting. And the level of thoughtfulness and engagement by the students is, is, so I, I will just say that that one, for, for my part, I, I'm not sure what I expected, but I was surprised to be so engaged by the students and the teachers. I think we're supposed to be hanging, aren't we, teaching and doing things?
Soon, yeah.
Yeah, soon. At East School and participating in other courses there. So, yeah, so it does work.
And for the financial literacy curriculum? We are working with two companies right now, both nonprofits. Fit Money, which is a Massachusetts-based company, the Next Gen Finance, which is based out of Ohio. Next Gen Finance has actually provided matching dollars from the state earmark. So Next Gen kind of gets the first foot in the door as far as how they want to dictate curriculum. It's all going to be run through the Office of Economic Empowerment and the State Treasurer's Office. And as I said, I believe these grants are going to be available very soon. And then what they hope to do this summer is create sort of a in-person camp at Bridgewater State or one of our state colleges or universities and, and create another opportunity for professional development of teachers there where they do get a stipend for the work that they do and then try and talk about how they're going to incorporate financial literacy on their own through the school district before sort of it becomes a mandate. And then I think that that gives us a real opportunity to get a head start on, on this and get teachers trained and get a curriculum in place to then really make a big splash once, you know, if this becomes state law.
Senator, we're bringing a credit to life, credit for life program here. And we've done this.
It's a great.
That's upcoming. And one of the positions that we're advocating for as a district at the high schools would definitely serve to teach courses in financial literacy. So that's one of our, our pushes here. So that'll, that'll fit nicely with this initiative. But I agree, that's a subject that you can absolutely intertwine into most correctly.
Yeah, the way that I see it, it's financial, the financial space has gotten so complicated with cryptocurrency and NFTs. You know, you name it, you can sell it and you can buy it on your phone nowadays. It's just, I think it's easier and easier for people to take money from people and they don't know what they're buying, if it's an asset or if it's digital or, you know, what it is. And now more than ever, I mean, we were seeing this even before this, this era started, we could, you know, trade stocks on your phone. We were seeing a decline in financial literacy amongst younger folk. So this, I think, in, if, if done correctly as well, and I think that Massachusetts, we will, we have a real opportunity here to, to train a, a new generation of citizens who are more, much more financially responsible than, than, you know, my generation was.
This committee is advocating for that.
That's great.
Well, moving on, one of the, probably the, the most important pieces of legislation that came out of the session this year, and it was the last thing which made it even that much more special, was our bill to addressing various mental health issues. I, I mean, I, I don't need to tell this committee that that's been a piece that has been missing. We took apart our mental health system three years ago. We were supposed to, you know, bring it down instead of this institution. We institutionalized it and we're supposed to make it more community health-based thing and we just never did it. And I think COVID really strained a lot of individuals and families and institutions. And I think it keeps spilling out something that we had been long struggling for. And you see it anytime you go to the emergency room. So this is, I think, a great first step on really building back both services, workforce development, so you can actually find doctors on, on mental health, behavioral health issues, but also reimbursement and then some of the structures to connect people to services. And so as you can read, some of the key pieces are implementing a 988 hotline, initiating public awareness campaigns, especially around Commonwealth red flag laws, which is when people are struggling with mental health issues and they're got lawful mandates coverage and eliminates prior authorization for mental health acute treatment. So, and then it's, it's also about stabilizing services for both adults and for children. And that's hugely important. This isn't just adults, this is adults and children. It's establishing an office of behavioral health promotion. It's increasing access to care for those in school and individuals in geographically isolated areas. We've seen that there's definitely places where we have wealth resources, strength though they are as kind of just in terms of resources that are reached in the state. And telehealth has, has helped mitigate all of that and made, which was passed in the first year of the pandemic in 2022, 2021. But even still, with the ability to access services through, through telehealth, you're still not service provider. So we still have a lot of work to do. And essentially, I think one of the most important pieces is creating a map for access to culturally competent care. So there's a lot of the bill, and I really like to characterize it as maybe that initial investment, that foundation that we're going to be able to build a lot of services on. But I, I found it was a huge important first step. And it was, was really, it was, everyone's why you get to really vote for something that's hugely important. It's going to make a difference in everybody's everyday life. This is one of those. This was one I was, you worked on.
Yeah, no, I mean, this is, this is a game changer, in my opinion. This is what Representative Moschino said, is I believe that this is bulldozing our current very flawed mental health system that we have in place in the state and really building all of the structure on top of that and treating mental health the same way we treat physical health, which I think is long overdue. Continuing to try and end the stigma associated with this and then opening up more inpatient and outpatient services for individuals. We had a child in the district call our office during the pandemic, a family call our office about their child. And they brought them to a Boston area hospital and they'd been in ER annex for three weeks. And the story unfortunately isn't uncommon. They were in an ER annex for three weeks trying to get services. And this poor, poor kid, eleven years old, going through a mental health crisis. Hospitals aren't prepared to take care of individuals, especially adolescents. There was only at that point in time, one hospital in the entire state that had beds for children of that age to get mental health services. And outpatient providers were absolutely slammed because of the COVID pandemic. So you have this crazy situation going on. So anyway, the Boston area hospital finally found outpatient support services for this this young child. The young child goes and applies to these outpatient services. The private healthcare provider for their family. Rejects the services and drops the child from the family's plan. The family is then told to go to Mass Health and that Mass Health is going to go and accept this outpatient treatment for this child. They go, they apply for Mass Health, Mass Health says they they don't meet income, regular income guidelines, and they can't get the services that way either. So twenty one days later, this kid leaves the Boston area hospital, goes back to his home on the South Shore with zero treatment whatsoever. Three weeks after a mental health crisis. And that was one of the things we highlighted as. If this is happening, then the whole system needs to be blown up and start back over again, because that should never happen in a system. When a child, especially that young, is experiencing a mental health crisis. And so that was the emphasis towards. Being this bill and as Joan said, it passed at four o'clock in the morning. I mean, they worked really, really hard to to get to get this done, to make sure that this was part of. Our our whole plan. But one of the things and, you know, it's it's kind of identified there, but the same way you know, physical every single year and it's covered by insurance. You can get a mental health evaluation every single year and it's covered by insurance. And I think it's going to be a godsend to so many people, whether they're. You know, starting their their struggle with mental illness, whether it's been something they've been dealing with their entire lives. Or whether they just need to talk something through with somebody. I just think that this is going to be. An opportunity that other states will look to at some point in time in the not so distant future and say Massachusetts was the one that got it right because. No states have been able to figure out mental health, absolutely none of them. And we're the ones that, in my opinion, are the first ones that are going to address at least the barrier to care that people experience. And I'm really, really hopeful that this is going to be something that's that's going to. Pay huge dividends in the future. And right, right before we pass this. Knowing that this was coming in the pipeline, we allocated five hundred million dollars of the ARPA money to this. So this is not just a system that we put in place where there's no funding attached to it. We put a half billion dollars behind creating a new health, mental healthcare system in Massachusetts.
And we're we're very optimistic that by paying attention to it, by starting to create these foundations, by funding some of this. But that it really will attract people to the field and because that's one of the big challenges is that it's not just about. It's, you know, the the first thing is barrier to care, but now there has to be someone there that you can find that can provide the services. So we're hopeful that this is going to really drive a lot of that workforce development, attract people to those fields. Yeah, so and then make it a viable place to to say, have, have your mental practice. Well, just the last, we just toss this in because you have the medical program, you know, that you cultivate. Positive school climates and we've done a lot around diversity and inclusion. So just a little let me know that. That the legislature didn't pass, but we got pretty far in terms of an act relative to educating diversity. And we expect that it'll get refiled. Really what it is, is it's establishing alternative certificate paths. Certificate paths and really creating an educator dashboard and requirements of district. Officers to think through plans and ensure compliance and really. To make those investments that create, you know, educated diversity. If we're if we're doing diversity at, you know, and and pulling forward teachers and and creating a more diverse teaching pool. Then you'll hire more diverse people and you'll have plans on how to support that. It's a whole school benefit. So we just thought that was something you would find interesting that didn't quite make it across the finish line, but that we really expect that we come back. And then there'll be grants really there to. Really to help, to help like do a lot of this work. Some of the pieces that we did actually, there were a lot of law bills that went through and at the end. And so we did allocate seven point five million towards tomorrow's teaching program to provide scholarships. To people committed to teaching in public schools, but then also seven point five million to go towards loan repayment for teachers of color. So. Just thought that was something that you would, you just kind of okay they, that co-presented, it was, it was obviously presented there. So we just thought that would be something. Interested to know. And of course, we are bill filing as we speak, so we'll definitely find out what what is to come. What fees that will be for generally all bills for education.
Thank you very much. Comprehensive presentation. We'll just go around if we can just to be consistent and I'll just give it forty to the members to ask any questions. Oh, Mr. Carr.
Thank you both for being here. We really, I know you have very busy schedules as soon as the world does, so they take the time to come. See us here. So thank you very much. Sort of in reverse order. We can do anything for you. Please let us know. These types of bills about education, which in university, if you need a voice in that, we'd be helpful, please. We'd be delighted to help. You know, anything that's pertinent to you in the area of education, we'd be very willing to be helpful to you. We'd be delighted to do that. So we're going through our budget process also. And so you you mentioned. Enrollment numbers, ours are pretty consistent. One of the things we would really like to do, and we're going to ask the town for permission to do this. Do free kindergarten education, we have a helping program, so that would add technically add students to our building. This is something we discussed in our budget. So can you raise some money? We would, you know, we would, so the our enrollment number would go up, our check there's seventy. Money, we will probably see that until twenty twenty five. It would be that we are, this is something we're hopeful to do, this one, we're on the radar. That is obviously some sort of uptake. You know, cost of insurance is very important to us and is, you know, if you look at how much we spend. For a student basis, a lot of that is the insurance we have in excellent. Program here. So any area of competitive insurance is excellent. So thank you for, thank you for doing all that. But I thought it'd be. Important to mention, we would really like to do the whole thing.
And and we, and please let us know as you continue to develop those plans too, because we were able to secure. Half million dollars for Waymouth when Waymouth was starting their free all day K. It's just a one-time expenditure type of, because I know space is a huge object and materials and other stuff, so.
Yeah, we actually have an update in this meeting on that front. We obviously share our chapter seventy with the town. It's it's part of the whole, our percentage. And there's some hope there. So we appreciate that advocacy as well.
Yeah, please let us know.
This is a thing that's tricky to budget for because there's, you know, you got to come up with the money and it's an addition to our budget. So we got to convince the town meeting, this is important to do. And then how do you pay it? And then chapter seventy is part of that solution, but then there is this gap. So thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Mr. Kearney now, as well as yours.
Well, thank you and thank you. You know, I I got to say, most of the time. Really happy with which, especially when it comes to. Some of the things that you guys have done as far as the food system goes is unbelievable. We see that in our school now. You're ready to offer a practice lunch. And we're starting to see that, we're starting to see the the effects of that. And thank you. Also too, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things too, is that room temperature, do you do you find that?
Yes, it is on our refile list.
Okay.
Which which we had support for.
You both host one.
Yeah, for those that don't know, it's it's just a study to look at room classroom temperatures and the impacts that it has, both. You know, and and both extremes to try and figure some out. It was endorsed by the Massachusetts Association as at least something to look at. We're not making any mandates or any recommendations. We're just asking for a group of people to get together, meeting like this and really start to study to see what impact that makes and what we can do. And this came predominantly from the whole public schools when a couple of the classrooms got to. Very hot temperatures during the summer, the pre the pre-summer months towards the end of school year. So.
And we did, we did try to put in for the air handlers. But and it was making it through, but then at the end, we did end up signing the economic development law bill, and that would have been a fond commitment. We weren't, even though we were able to pass some of those during informal session, that is bonds, we were able to get that. But we can also have that conversation. That's something else we should be trying to reinitiate. That's still relevant. Just funstone, you know, that conversation if other economic bonds or other other municipal bonds, something like that, we can certainly have that conversation.
The other thing, I I I did see a lot of work on the. But I also saw some, and thank you for that. But I also saw a sports betting. Governor Baker and Speaker Mario said that they. This district has twenty eight percent of kids, it's twenty eight percent of this district, this town, are children. They're going to have to grow up with a sports game. You can't watch a game like you talk about a generation that we grew up with our father watching baseball. Now we're going to see what the odds are. Well, that, what were you guys thinking when we passed the sports betting? Think that was good for math or? Like, because I don't really see any positive things that that has on our children. I'd just like you to share if you see anything positive in sports betting.
So I I I think the biggest thing was knowing that gambling is here, that sports betting is out there. And and it certainly surrounds the state and that to the extent that we agreed to do it. Proactively, that there's an element of control of how to do it. And it's been too long since I've looked at the details of the bill, but also a lot of us, you know, express concerns. And and if you see, there are definitely strategies in there, there's things that are really meant to try to put. Some guardrails around and to really regulate in thoughtful way to provide some resources around gambling addiction, things like that. And I think that was, I don't think anyone was, I don't think it can characterize anyone as being excited that we were doing it. But it does present an opportunity to at least take hold of it and then and then there's some revenue that flows from it. So. I I really think that was really more the way it was characterized to us because. There were definitely a lot of us who were not keen.
Right. Well, it's going to have a really adverse effect on our children. I just want you to know that we do vote. It's twenty eight percent of children that, you know, we 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 appreciate that you're up there, but you got to remember these children. And I also like to see the children's carcass. We we instituted something that's been going for ten, ten fifteen years now. You guys don't even have a children's carcass. Yeah, everything else except your child, children's carcass. So I I I really would like you guys to understand when you vote, it's twenty eight percent of these children. And that's what we're all doing here. We represent children in this district. Thank you for.
Yeah, and and just on the gambling front, so I I would say the Supreme Court opened the door for them to go into every state. It looks like that's basically what they're going to do. Massachusetts, both prior to the time that either one of us got in legislature, voted for casino gaming. And so there was no real pushback that we could provide to them. And they also built a coalition that had every single one of the sports teams. Wanted gaming to to be accessible in Massachusetts. I mean, they they built a very strong case to basically say all the other, you know, Massachusetts was one of the biggest holdouts for a long period of time to make sure that. We got, I would say, the best practices from all the other states that jumped right into it. And tried to put some of those practices in place to minimize the risk and minimize the harm. There's one hundred percent going to be harm associated with sports gaming. I'm not going to.
Families, the kids.
Oh, yeah.
Sports games because they're addicted to gambling. I think you guys really made a disaster up there.
On a different note, student nutrition bill, I think it just made such a difference and I see it on a daily basis. I think, you know, even in schools where it's not majority low income and probably most kids have already eaten breakfast at home. So many kids are taking advantage of this. And I feel like that just really helps everyone start the day in such a good place and. And be more ready to learn. And so just the trick, the connection between student nutrition and its social emotional wellness. And school readiness is so, you know, it's so connected and it just makes such a difference. And I think. When when things became free during COVID, it was so obvious that it made a difference. It felt like such a relief this year and I feel like. Seeing, I'm sure it happens here because of my kids report to me after their enrichment classes, they go back for another breakfast before the school day. So everyone in the state all the time was very well fed. But also with mine, students who I work with in a different town are just so psyched to go get breakfast, kind of like. Set for, get set for the day and and be ready to learn. So it just, it really has such a direct impact on on everyone's readiness for learning. I just love seeing that. It's like so direct, such a direct positive effect on our kids. So. Thank you for everything you're doing and thank you for being here. That's all I can say. Awesome.
Thanks.
I'd like to share with all.
Thank you, Chair. First, thank you both for being such accessible and responsive partners to this community. I see you both all the time and I want to communicate openly with Senator Connor more so, but not because you're any less accessible. Representative, it's just a lot of work within the past, but it's it's. It's remarkable and I think it's very worth being, thanking you both for that. Because of the massive benefits from your dedication to your innovative community. You serve. You know, ninety percent of the game is showing up and you both show up and that makes a huge difference, you know, so people don't. So. I have two questions that both relate to funding. And that's because, in my opinion. Any shortcoming in a school district is related to resources, whether those are human resources or physical plant resources, cognitive resources. All of which derive from financial resources. And we have a small community here that is funded entirely by residential property taxes. Of which there aren't many, which you know, we have a huge population. Which in turn, I would imagine, adversely affects our chapter seventy, but. Nevertheless, you know, we have needs and we're sitting in the. Probably the nicest room in the district, okay, all schools included in that. You have both been in the other room that we used to have this meeting in, which was the horrible room, in my opinion, because the pillar in the middle of the issue is a terrible room.
It's kind of a nice spot to have the pill.
It's it's, you know, it's probably one of the only community rooms with a destructive, destructive seating. However, unfortunately, that room is much more representative of this building that we're sitting in right now. And so just one example of resource issue that that I I I have. And so. First, my question relates to general funding. How do we, you look at that. And by the way, when I press my comments, my my comments with the. assertion that you might have seen me on my phone when I was, when I, when you were speaking, I wasn't not listening. I wasn't texting people. I was just. Gathering some data that you have right in front of me and, you know, I have the internet here, so I'm just trying to, in preparation for my comment. There's three hundred fifty one towns and cities in Massachusetts. There's, you you said there was a, was it six billion dollars that was dedicated to, or six? No, six billion. Six billion. Dedicated to the school to six pro Massachusetts on chapter seventy. So. Understanding that not everyone gets an equal slice of the pie, that's not how it works and that it's need based. I'm sure there's a fairly complex calculus in terms that that goes into. The allocation of that six billion dollars. That's it. If you just divide it evenly, it's seventeen million dollars thereabouts, okay? We're getting three million dollars. If you look at population alone, co-hasset is at the two hundredth. So let's just call that the forty percentile for the towns and cities in Massachusetts. But three million dollars is a much smaller percentage of that seventeen million, you know. So it's not necessarily reflective of our just population. Status, for lack of a better phrase, and compares with the other cities and towns in Massachusetts. Understanding that there's obvious, you know, needs and, you know, socioeconomic considerations that go into that allocation as well. I'm wondering, when you look at the graph of our. I'm wondering, and you look at the graph of our chapter seventy funding, it's kind of like it's a gradual increase. So I'm wondering, uh, what, are there any ways you, you can think of, and I'm kind of putting you on the spot, but maybe it's not a question. It's a question answer now and here now, maybe, maybe it's something that you can think about for us. Is there a way that maybe coacid can improve its, um, its chapter seventy allocations or, or increase the rate at which it's, it's seeing increases? So in other words, turning that green circle into more of a black diamond, um, for coacid. So we're seeing A, more of that seventeen million facility evenly, um, but B, also a more steady increase. And, you know, it's kind of like almost like a hundred thousand, maybe a little under a hundred thousand increase every year. Change that to like three hundred thousand, you know, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. If you have any, some, some sort of ideas right off the top of your head, that's great. I'd love to hear them. But if not, you just consider, you know, what, what you might go suggest for a town like coacid, um, in, in, you know, short of us increasing enrollment by fifty percent tomorrow, isn't gonna happen.
I, I think the first step that we needed to take for, for education reform was the Student Opportunity Act. Because we had those school districts that do have those, um, socio-economical challenges that are associated with them, that were, um, so incredibly glaring to us that that was the, the first step that we needed to take. To get to that point in time, I served on both conference committees. To get to that point in time, we were negotiating over literally how much percentage of income and how much basically dollars do we put on each one of those kids inside of that school district that we would give in excess of what we traditionally give to try to provide more opportunity for that child to succeed? And, um, the first session that we did this in, we, we didn't get it done. We couldn't agree on that specific number. Went back to the drawing board almost immediately the next session and we were able to get that done. From there, I think that the state wants to see if it can keep its commitment of continuously, continuously investing, you know, four hundred million dollars one year. And then keeping that four hundred million in there and then doing another four hundred the next year and go on and on and on from there to see if they can continue to keep up with those numbers. At some point in time, we will get to the final figure in three, two fiscal years from, from, from now, we'll get to that final figure. At that point in time, all of the, in my opinion, all of the resources that we would be allocating every single year are now available resources to us. So say we're investing just for a rough number, five hundred million dollars a year. Where we, we keep pace with that, our economy continues to go up by a clip that's higher than that, we're able to, to make that investment. There's five hundred million dollars, that's, that's right there, that's no longer needed to go to the most economically challenged school districts in the state. And now can be allocated where, and where I do hope it goes, is reforming our chapter seventy formula and providing more resources for all of the kids in the, the whole of the state, while keeping an eye and focus on the economically challenged school districts to make sure we don't lose progress in, in what we've made there. But to really start doing that. And then, you know, that's, that's with our budget we built right now. And now you have however many dollars are going to be brought in by the millionaire's tax that just was put in place. And so now you have, you know, let's say approximately, you've seen I spent somewhere between one point five and two billion dollars that you have there. And that can only go, um, or according to the, there's a gray area where, when, where it can go and how it was written and the SJC ruling and all that stuff. But the, the governor has made, um, a claim that she is going to make sure that only goes to transportation and education, her budget.
That's just gonna add to the existing spending.
Right.
So it's not gonna, it's, it's not gonna replace current spending, it's gonna add. So it will add, it will be a, um, a plus on whatever else.
So I mean, so you look at five hundred million dollars that you have, that's, that's currently being invested, that we can continue to keep up with every single year. And then on top of that, you have, let's say, half of that, a billion dollars that you can, uh, use for education as well. You're looking at one point five billion dollars, um, or twenty five percent of where our current investment level is right now inside of all of public education. We have the opportunity with the resources we have to make those generational changes that we need to make inside of the funding formula to bring school districts, all school districts up to where they should be. Absolutely not should we be continuously investing in schools, just three percent or four percent? You need to, you need to, a- as I stated earlier in the presentation, keep up with what the costs are. Uh, health insurance went through the roof, uh, teacher salaries and finding teachers, I know it was very, it is very difficult. Yeah, special education, out of school placements, transportation, everything is, is becoming more and more expensive. The state's trying to be as, as, um, strong of a partner as possible, the things like the lunch program, uh, some other funding that's, that's coming down the pipeline. But what we need to do is continuous, continue to bring the resources, the direct cash resources back to our communities. So they can then do what they want to do with it. So you're not having to, um, you know, go to and worry about where we can start, uh, uh, you know, all day free kindergarten, that those resources are, well, the state's gonna increase our bottom line by, you know, eight, nine, ten percent next year, so we can anticipate that. But the formula has just been stuck in the mid or early two thousands. I think it was under Governor Swift last time, chapter seventy itself was changed. I mean, we've edited things around it, inside of it, including the Student Opportunity Act. But yeah, no, I think that once the Student Opportunity Act is fully funded, or even before then, we should start making plans for what the Senate President called was not the Student Opportunity Act, but the Student Opportunity Plan. And that includes, um, things like Free Community College and other elements that are going to be part of this that we hope to use some of those financial resources to, to fund. But no, I think that absolutely our school district should be getting more than this. I, you know, hate going to give presentations with the same three percent every single year. I do. And, um, it's great that we're able to keep that commitment. A lot of other states don't do that, uh, for their communities and they rely almost exclusively on county money and, uh, community money. But the, we do and, um, I'm happy we're able to do it, but we need to do more, hundred percent.
Think of it this way, anytime you, so the, the formula really does date back that long. It reflected what they were trying to accomplish and how they were trying to uplift different school districts and provide it in an equitable way at that time. So over twenty, what, twenty-two, twenty-three years ago, um, so much has changed. Like, for example, you know, I reference, um, uh, enrollment because enrollment is down statewide. Um, I feel like it's down easily a hundred thousand children, maybe I'm making that up. But yeah, but the state, I feel, I'm not sure I heard that number, so take that with a grain of salt. But, um, you know, I think when, and whenever you touch a formula like that, uh, there are winners and losers. And so that just makes it that much harder. Um, and we're really trying to articulate sort of what, where the investments are and how you're trying to, um, distribute. Cause we're spending a couple of dollars, right? So you're trying to do it fairly inequally. And I think, um, you know, you heard us say it earlier, is that the Student Opportunity Act and our plan, um, is really an effort to build equity into the system. What people are doing is they're taking a look to see how much money are our school districts spending, right? Because part of the formula is that you have to spend a threshold, right? A certain threshold. And I'm just gonna go out on a limb and say, I haven't looked at your budget in a long time, but I'm just guessing you spent over your threshold, right? Hall does, Hinkin' does, Sitchman does, right? All of our communities spend over the threshold. And so what they were doing is they were looking to see is we're funding it at three percent like this. And there are some that are just keeping pace. And then there are schools like ours that are spending a lot more. And that's, I think, part of the reason why you're seeing a lot of sort of, um, the, the achievement gaps and, and divides. And part of what they're looking at is to see where, where you're able to do these things. So from a philosophical or like financial improvement matter, we really try to do is say, all right, how can a state start to, um, to start to bring that all in line? And then once it's aligned, then we can really start to take the next steps and say, all right, why are we relying on something like declining enrollment? When we know perfectly well, enrollment's declining everywhere, um, why is that the weight thing that's doing it? I mean, how is that hurting, say, um, school districts out in rural mass, things like that? I actually watch what they do because it, it, it's so relevant to how and how they're, how theirs is calculated as well. The charter schools is another piece of it, that's another way of sort of diverting. We're lacking social charter schools excellent, um, but there are other components too. And what we're really talking about is investing in our schools, investing in our teachers and investing in our students. If that's how you unlock economic potential. Um, and then what you're, what we're hoping, I think overall, is that you're gonna start to see, um, a lot more earning potential coming out of, um, kids that just maybe weren't quite getting the opportunities who are able to provide to our districts. But it's, it's absolutely, I, I agree with the Senator that there's an, um, an overarching acknowledgement that, um, we haven't kept pace. And, um, there's a series of, um, school funding cases, um, the most recent one, what was the first one? Was it, um, I'm just not gonna, oh, I can't believe I can't remember it. But the, the second one was Hancock. And what it said was that as long as the state had a plan, um, that it was fine and you didn't have to change what you're doing. And I think what people were really starting to look was to go back to those school funding cases and saying, uh, maybe that's not working for us right now. And I think what you're seeing is, um, is a revisitation of this, revisiting of those ideas and exactly along the lines of what you're talking. And we've been living around the edges of it. And we talked about the circuit breaker, right? And the seventy-five percent trying to help me introduce everyone else's spend. We've talked about the transportation, I think that's gonna be a big one, um, just drivers. It's just hard to get school buses. So like, there's all of these challenges and I think that they've been sort of acute landing over time. And I feel like that's, once we get that equity piece and we've got everybody sort of on the same playing field, then we can really revisit some of the larger things. And it feels like there's, I mean, I don't, all right, we've only been doing this for three terms, but, uh, but it does feel like it, it's a very intentional, um, sort of moving in the direction, um, around what you're talking about. Um, and it, I mean, how old, how long is the, um, Mass School Building Association? I mean, that's only what, twenty years, right? Again, that is a recognition that there's a lot of unmet need, that we haven't been keeping pace, um, and that, um, there needs to be some transformative investments. And, and you see programs like that coming out, so I, I agree with Senator.
I won't, I won't ask, it's like part of my question, it's an interesting time, but I, I just, I would suggest to, to both of you that there is a level of urgency to that. And it sounds like, it, it, it sounds like it's, it's. It's likely to improve in, in two cycles. That's great. I, I do think that some, um, some forethought and prior planning would probably help roll out when you get there, what to do with that, additional funds that have been freed up. Under that, under that, that, uh, concept you're talking about, Senator Connor. But, um, you know, just remember, you know, I just, I just hate to, it is, it is an absolute reality that there are certain communities that are in, uh, much more sort of a dire need than other communities, right? But we also don't want to just presume that, you know, communities that we think of as affluent are, are just sort of ignored because, oh, they're gonna be okay. Because, you know, coacid, there are very affluent, affluent people that live here. It's, it's not actually from a budget perspective that affluent. So, um, and, and we, we need to remember that. And, and as long as that, that, that curve is so, is so gradual, so is the improvements to our educational program. Or so are the improvements to our educational program. You know, there, there's a direct correlation to them and, and we're, we're not going to be able to, to, uh, deliver, uh, vast and, uh, critical improvements to our teaching and learning and our, and our educational curriculum programming in schools if we don't see increases in funding that more than could care of inflation and things like that. So I just ask you to sort of address that some areas again, and thanks again for information, for everything you could provide.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Colin. So thank, again, thank you for, for the time. I think you posed a lot of questions for me from the, uh, I have a few of my own, but I do want to recognize, you know, we're, we're volunteers. Weeknight, you guys are here, it's fantastic, it's testing your accessibility and your commitment to the community. So, so thank you for that. And then Vice Chairman Colin will start by saying you shouldn't have said anything on the phone because it's really impressive, you rattle off its facts. Um, reveal that you use the internet and you do it beforehand, so it's a little less.
I'm not sure they really could see you two. I was kind of, I've been very impressed by the, by this, um.
They know, I already said it many times, but I was more worried about you being a guest and then seeing me text while you're talking on my laptop texting, I was looking.
Well, legislatures is attached to, I mean, it's looking for innovative, is that, I mean.
Exactly.
So, um, but I, I do want to echo, um, Vice Chairman Colin's point. And I'll be, I'll be a little more pointed on. There are, I think, we, we in this district, we don't have fun, full stop. Teach Spanish, can't afford a Spanish teacher. So there are needs we have and I hear there's plans afoot, but we, in my role here as Chair of the School Committee, I, I'm dealing with the kids we have in our school now. And so I guess, maybe not as committee asks, because we haven't asked this of the committee, but as personal asks to constituents, to the extent there are things you can do to help bring some of the, more of the resources to our schools and things that we should do as a school to engage with you, to give you the tools that A does ask, please, let's do that. And please, you know, help us get a larger slice of that, of that pie, because there's things that are, they're, they're real pressing needs that we, we have in, in the district here. And so you, you answered question on the millionaire's tax, that's great, additional funding, so additional resources for that. I'll just list a few of the things that you've already touched on that, uh, that are needs that we have in our district that we've talked about here at the committee level. Out of school placements, that is a big and sometimes surprising cost. Uh, special education costs, those are also costs that we, you know, we have a stabilization fund. But, you know, to be able to give kids the education they need or they're, they're actually constitutionally entitled to, uh, sometimes that takes big, uh, gaps in our funding. And so sometimes we do get into situations and we've had these conversations, um, at the committee level and also at the administration level where we're like, well, hey, we've got this big chunk we have to spend now. Where's that gonna come from? Do we have to start making sacrifices? So, you know, those are areas where we definitely need some, uh, need some help and I appreciate your attention on that. The transportation, uh, this is, I think it's a statewide issue. And, you know, that may be something that is, is worthy of, of looking at from a legislative perspective or maybe executive. Uh, where there are districts around the state can get, um, some assistance either immediately in the form of, I know in COVID it seemed silly, but like the National Guard is helping drive kids around. We might be there. We, our, uh, our, our school bus system in Cohasset is really not resilient with the lack. We have, we have buses, we have enough buses, but we don't have enough human beings to, to drive them around. And we've had, I don't know if it's, you know, licensing system is, 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 is a challenge. We've got to try and fail and get failed exams repeatedly. But that would be something that, again, personally, if you could look into what, um, options we have to help out, alleviate some of that, um, it would help our district and help, I know, our neighboring districts as well. And then last thing, again, on, on a personal level, I, I very much appreciate what you're doing. One of the things that resonates with me on the legislative side is the focus on financial literacy. That's a huge element for me because I think that's something that we don't do a great job with in, um, in, in, in schools. I do worry, again, personally, about the idea of a legislative mandate, because those typically are harder to, uh, change. Seven is a great example, been around since the early two thousands. You know, what happens if the bill we adopt today about financial literacy doesn't match the financial models that we have twenty years from now and we're stuck there? So I just encourage you to think about, you know, the appropriate vehicle to, to communicate that. And the, the last thing I'd, I'd offer that is, uh, not unique about Cohasset, but is, is important to thinking about our district in the terms of, of, of funding is that, you know, Vice Chairman Colin said it really well. We are, we don't have a commercial center, so we are a, we are a town of rich people, but it's not a rich town. And the allocations we get from the school don't reflect the perception of our town. And the other challenge of being a town of rich people is that our students have other options. And having gone to private school myself, I am a huge proponent of public education because it's not only a great education, but it's a foundation and fabric of our community. And part of the reason I'm here is to ensure that we are able to deliver an educational product that is equal to or better than anything anyone can get everywhere else, so that we can restore that fabric. So that ties back to the beginning of the conversation that I had in my remarks and then to Vice Chairman Colin's remarks. To the extent we can work with you to get access to some of these, to some additional resources to help execute on our vision for giving the kids the services we know they deserve. Very much appreciate it again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, and we appreciate all the work that, that all of you do, um, for the, the students Cohasset and beyond. We know that there are challenges that, um, sort of the, the stereotype, as you say, don't, doesn't fit the, the, what the reality of what's happening. Where, you know, people would think that the school district, which I still think is a great school district, um, uh, but, but, but you're, you're lacking financial resources and you have a state that's flush with cash and you're saying, how come some of that isn't flowing down here to hire a Spanish teacher? Or do one of these things that you're, that you're, you know, that, that's on your list of things to do, but just can't afford. And our message is that, we hear you loud and clear, we understand, um, that financial, um, reality that you're faced with and we're gonna try and do as much as we can. Changing the chapter seventy formula is, is going to be a heavy lift, finding out what happens next after the Student Opportunity Act has been successfully implemented, even if it's just at the, the stage. I mean, it's going to go the, the six years, but when it goes in the fourth year, the fifth year, we're seeing, um, you know, there's. Um, you know, there's about twenty-five school districts that the Student Opportunity Act really touches um, as far as the, the significant resources. And if we start seeing those resources, um, you know, really going to work and, and, and starting there. I think the other elements of the Student Opportunity Act is a way that we can send those direct resources back to you and that's transportation reimbursements, that's charter school reimbursements. Um, sp- uh, special education reimbursements and as a health insurance component of that too. Where at least that can be, you know, sort of the, the first valve that we start to turn on to send some of those resources back to the community. I, I can see that happening. In a relatively quicker fashion than reforming chapter seventy. But I think at some point in time uh, in the very not so distant future, we really have to have that conversation amongst all the legislators. As far as, look, we understand what's happening there. I mean, we, we, I was in the room when we shut off. Where, where is the, where is the last school district? What percentage of um, children have to be low income in order for them to qualify for the top amount of money? And seeing those school districts that were two percent off, that are not part of this and know that they still have, you know, tremendous challenges because they, they fit in that, that gray area that. We needed, that there needed to be a line drawn at some point in time. I want to see them get a lot of resources and um, I do believe that with the Millionaire's Tax. With the Student Opportunity Act's success and the amount that we've been able to fund that. I do believe that we're going to get to a point in time that we, we can start to make those increases, not just to the, the twenty-five uh, most economically challenged school districts, but to the other. Um, three hundred and twenty-six.
Let's go back.
Yeah.
No, it's wonderful to be with you. Um, we're always glad to be, uh, anytime. Just reach out. We're always happy to come. We love to come together. Um, and it's always to hear. It's just really great to be able to keep um, at least our fingers on pulse of what your challenges are here for you. What, uh, what your aspirations are for the, for the school district, for your students.
I'll just add that the issues that were presented here very much directly match the needs that we've articulated as superintendents. So. We really appreciate that. Awesome.
Thank you. It's been great to be with you all.
Before you run on, could we take a group photo?
Absolutely.
Send those out to our school community.
Yes.
Excuse my uh, back. Is the picture?
Um, I want to get the picture in power.
Uh, did it go to that?
My voice disappeared.
I don't know. I don't want to.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he hasn't, he hasn't graduated iPhone yet.
Alright, come back. Special green with the end rise. Green. Check, check. Okay. I will. Thank you, John. Appreciate your time. You've been there before. See you, see you. Yeah, my wife and I frequently have iPhone Android conversations. Is this, she's an iPhone person and I am an Android person. I stand by my Android.
No family plan. I have any Android as well.
Alright, so that was, that was very educational.
Very.
That was great. Um, we'll make sure to keep that as a regular, regular agenda. Maybe not for next week. That's probably too soon. So um, so with that, I think we'll move on to uh, school updates. And Dr. Sullivan, you've got some uh, happenings around the uh, around the schools to share.
I do. Yeah. So I, I thought um, that one of the things I did the last couple of weeks is I spent a lot of time in our, our elementary schools. Um, and we, I did a learning walk. We, we do learning walks monthly as leadership. And what we've been looking at for the last year plus now is student engagement and al- and also culturally responsive teaching. Uh, and, you know, we do this with various groups. Our, our leadership team, which is, you know, it encompasses all the principals. Um, our assistant principals, Mrs. Swonka, Ms. Owen, obviously Dr. Scollins, myself. We do this uh, at each building and it's a, it's a method of providing feedback for our principals. And then our principals are able to provide feedback to our staff. And at this point, we're just going into rooms. Um, and we don't have like a set. Uh, it's not like someone is putting on a show for us. This is what's happening every day. Uh, we also are doing, looking to do this with our department chairs and then the overall goal was to really have staff be able to do these, these learning walks. Uh, on their own so they can help and uh, in, in a format, share information. But I just spent some time doing um, some learning walks with our principal and then also doing a learning walk, as I mentioned, at Deer Hill today with the leadership team. And I was just struck again by how wonderful these two schools are. Uh, they are happy places of learning. Um, and our students are really thriving. Uh, and this also serves Chairman Dial as my academic update. Yes. Because one of the things that I was very pleased to see was a lot of the work that we've done about analysis of MCAS. The fruits of that. And this is a particular example. This is Mrs. Holland's third grade class. Uh, and then to have to go into this lesson and then go into Mrs. Clark's third grade class and see similar activities happening was, was really nice. Uh, what, what Mrs. Um, Holland was doing here is she was going over a, a non, uh, a fiction piece. And she was having students respond to an open, uh, open, uh, yeah, an open question. Where, and what she was having them do is she was modeling good answers. What was, what would be an excellent answer, what would be a pretty good answer. What would be an average answer, what might not be a sufficient answer, really looking specifically at uh, evidence. And the evidence that would be taken from the passage. And she, and the students were so. For a third grade class to watch the way that they piggybacked on each other's comments and shared information was very impressive. Uh, and it, it was just wonderful to see them self reflecting, grading their own work. And giving themselves a three, a two, or one based on the rubric. Just having that experience of what is good writing? What does it look like? What are the qualities of it? And then being able to replicate it. So it was really refreshing to see this. And uh, this is what was happening here. Uh, just a fantastic class today. Um, this is again, on, aside from just doing good writing, they were learning about textual types. And this is actually from Mrs. Clark's class. And they were doing what, what, what was a narrative, uh, nonfiction. And this is her reading to the class. But again, these students were so engaged. Uh, and it was just a happy place all around. And one of the, the devices that the whole third grade did, you can tell I went to the third grade that. But that the whole third grade were a part of, and this is clearly a project that um, happened with the whole third grade took on, and kudos to them. Is they took the opportunity of, with the new year, having the students reflect. And if these are for each student, and you can see the students' names, and if you, uh, each number in two thousand twenty-three has a tab. So if you open it up. The first one says, what's your goal for two thousand twenty-three? I think the next one said, what are some of the things you need to improve upon? Uh, the third was, what is a great book that you'd like to read this year? And I can't remember what the font was, but it, but they, it was so nice to see them reflecting and to be able to do a reset. And it also serves the purpose, and this is something that would really stress in Cohasset, is that every classroom should speak to the students in it. Meaning that it should capture who they are and it should be a community. And this was a way to kind of reboot that community. And I was just very impressed by that. I had no chance to, to tell them that yet, but if any of the third grade teachers are listening, kudos to you. Um, this is art. Uh, and I loved to see uh, the art that was, the art projects. And you can just see back there on the board. Um, the objectives that are written down. And each of the objectives for, for the grades for this particular day was so multi culturally put together. Uh, this particular project for fifth, fifth graders was Islamic art inspired tiles that they were, they were printing. So Ms. Berman, who's a fabulous art teacher at Deer Hill, was taking the opportunity to teach them about art history and history. Uh, while she was teaching art. And this was just, they were so wrapped up in this. And these products are beautiful. And absolutely, if I had a student in this class, I'd frame this. That's how wonderful they were. So it was just lovely to see. And there, there are wonderful students that were contemplating their art. It's great. Um, there's so much happening at Deer Hill in Osgood that is embedded. This is social emotional learning. This is a, a chance for our students. Every student at Deer Hill has the opportunity on a cycle to do yoga. This started from a CEF grant and it's been extended into the, into the year. So every, every so often a class goes in and they take, take some time to self reflect. This is all about self management. We all, I could use more of this. I'll tell you. I crawled out of the room while my wife was in there. And my home's core was sore. I hear you. I am the Tin Man. I need flexibility, but besides, just from a mental health perspective. This is lovely to see. And I would say very cutting edge. I don't know of any other elementary schools that are, they're infusing this as much. I know some are doing this. But I'm glad that we're a part of this trend. Um, and then this is from After School Enrichment. This is actually taken from um, the Deer Hill newsletter. The After School Enrichment um, program at Deer Hill and Osgood, the Deer Hill right now is just thriving. Uh, so many interesting offerings, everything from cross stitching to algebra, make it easy. And these are elementary. Um, it's just wonderful to see. And then the same at Osgood, you know, and I did the walk with Principal Farrell. This is a number corner that is a staple of, of bridges. And uh, in this particular number corner, they were doing uh. They, they were showing patterns and they were, they were working with students on patterns. That's a, a real heavy component of number corner. And the fidelity with the calendar work they're doing at uh, Deer Hill, by the way, was also very apparent. But this is Mrs. Capriano's class and they were enjoyed to be with as well. Um, having said that, we had our first snowfall and to see the students all wrapped up, you can see, I just love to smile at that student, you know, looking, she's, they're all ready to go and they're gonna go. And they're gonna play in the, in the, in the yard. And Mrs. Farrell was going over some rules about, you know, if you're wearing your, your full uh, clothes with the suit and everything, you can go play in the snow. And those who are, are on the blacktop, uh, hopefully that'll be uh, their turn at a later point. And this is what you see. Um, so there were snowmen, snowmen abound, snow women, so people abounding all over the place. This is uh, Deer Hill. And I was actually coming for my learning walk at Osgood and I drove by this and stopped and I could hear someone say, hey, the superintendent's taking a picture of us. And I, I walked out just to take a picture of this lovely scene because it just reminds you how special our schools are. Uh, that we're offering this full experience for our students. And I took a picture of this at lunch just because um, you know, from time to time, I meet some students who just. Making a smile. Uh, every time I go to Osgood and I, I tend to see these two uh, young ladies and they always address me as Mr. Mayor. I just thought that survived. Hi, Mr. Mayor. How are you, Mr. Mayor? And I, I, you know, just fist bumps to them, but I look forward to that through there. All the way up through high school, hopefully. And uh, we did have a lot, a lot to do with MLK Day and you had activities happening. This is at Deer Hill. These are some students that went their knowledge to the morning announcements. Um, and uh, various activities. Another student who did some, did some work within her class. Uh, there was a standout. You see the picture she drew of Dr. Marley King Jr. And some of the work that's being done around that. I, I love that they're reflecting personally. You can see five things I will do to make others feel good. So it's really taking Dr. King's message of helping others, stimulus means ways to, to make what we, well, our world better. Our world a better place. And reflecting on that, putting it into place. I think January is always a great month of reflection for all of us. It's a new year and it's a, it's a chance to, to redo what we're doing. Teachers, this is the Negro League. There was a display that one of the teachers did that I thought was really nice and effective. And then I was mentioned by Representative Moschino, but um, this is our, it is back. And I'm, and I'm proud that I'm part of a community that does such special moments like this. This is the month of King Jr. Breakfast that circulates. Uh, within the faith community. Uh, and this, I, I was proud to attend this with my, my oldest son over there, which is really nice. Engage him in this kind of activity. It's nice to see. And it was nice to see other students there as well. Uh, that's our own, at least again, Carla, my co-director, who spoke at the beginning of it. And you can just see the gentleman right here. Um, who, I don't know if he gets his name wrong, but it's Arthur Bembry. He's the execu- executive director of a group called Partakers. And their, their, their work is to help uh, who have been in prison and going back into the community. Uh, have education and to be able to rehabilitate uh, themselves and become productive members of society. And I was very impressed with the uh, group that was there listening and how involved they were in trying to support partakers. So that's also another special, special thing about our community. So I, I just wanted to share that as sort of a, just a kind of a reboot for me. Um, whenever I want to smile, I go down and, and as you probably imagine, I go down to the kindergarten and uh, and, and the first one. And walk through those classrooms and, and just remember how, how special my job is and how lucky I am to do what I do. So, you know, thank you for allowing me to do that. And that's, that's my good news for today. And that's really all I want to share.
Thank you very much. And that also is the uh, that's the teaching and learning academic.
Dr. Scollins is unable to be here today, but I, I, that was, I didn't even need to ask her to show me something because I saw it myself. And it was a wonderful uh, uh, example.
It's a two for one, which pushes us right through the middle of uh, Agenda E and into uh, the special education update from Mr. From this Barbara Swonka.
Hello, everyone. Yes.
I think you have the ability to share.
I believe I do have the ability to share my screen. So I would like to do that now as um. As the beginning of what I would like to do tonight, I really would like to kind of introduce you to um, my revamped webpage. Um, you can see, and I'm going to take you exactly through it and how you can open everything up and show it to you and to the community so that people can take advantage of it. When I came on board two and a half years ago, I started adding on to the website. And um, what I've really done, um, a lot of work this particular year is kind of reorganizing that, cleaning it up. Making it a little bit more interactive. So I'm going to show you and everyone how to get through it and what is there. So if you go into our Cohasset Public Schools and the departments and go into the Office of Student Services. What you'll see there is that we have our introduction there to the Office of Student Services and, and what it means. Um, as part of our overview, you can see over here, um, I have really kind of compiled this in a way that it. It's much cleaner and it makes a whole lot more sense. Um, because as I added to it, it kind of got a little bit unwieldy. There was so much information there. Um, right now, our preschool lottery is going on. So that is really front and center here. And what you can see there is um, the letter explaining the preschool lottery with all of the conditions and so on and so forth of it. And then you can see our live links right here, which give the dates. Um, but also shows the timeline, the required residency document list and the application. And you can go right into it and fill out the form and submit everything that way to us. And it's, it's a live link for people, as are the previous two. And they can really access that digitally, which is great. If for some reason they can't, they can always come into the office for us. But um, we were very pleased to come into the twenty-first century with that.
It's great work on this.
Now if we give rid of a lottery, that'd be great.
I know.
I hate lotteries. It's a community we should be able to offer service without people having to buy the word.
I think we have that in our budget. I think we have that in our budget.
We do.
We do.
Sorry, she's expressing my irritation.
Completely. We love it.
Completely.
It's a beautiful expectation.
Rec camp here too in this town. It's, it's not just the schools.
No, it's.
General shortage of services at the town.
Okay, stay on target. You're pulling me away with it.
The next section is my parent information section. These are all different guides to various and sundry things in the Office of Student Service, well, that fall under not just co-host, but student services in general. All of these are guides through DESI that parents can click on, take a look at and get information about. The next section is news and announcements. So any notices of special education service, my annual child find notice, our destruction of records notice, which always gets updated every year because that gets pushed out, information about our extended school year program, and again, our informational letter on preschool, all under these news and announcements and they get regularly updated. Once our preschool lottery is over, this particular one will, this informational letter will stay here just so that, you know, parents have it. It will just kind of lose this little side tab once that's over.
So one, one potential suggestion, perhaps if you could add a blurb next to each one of those, let people know what they are. They'll know what they're, they're. Cause just destruction records, it sounds like a very exciting click. Probably is not as exciting as.
And maybe you should have a blurb.
I'll never get to.
She's been limited in the characters that you can put in there.
I am.
But I.
There's a limitation then.
No, I, that, that's a good point. It's a really good point.
It is.
I, I've tried to do that myself, but you do get a little bit limited. It becomes like a Scrabble game.
That's true. That's true. DESI informational links. There's a whole wealth of information in DESI and it can be really difficult to navigate. However, it's important for all districts and ours included to really have all of the really key information up there. So the McKinney-Venture Homeless Assistance Act, it's a direct link to that. The IDEA Act, transition planning for students who are upper level students, 14 and above, who start to come to their IEP meetings and make plans for the future. The basic special education process, special education surrogate parent program. Because we, you know, we, there are students who have special education surrogate parents. What faith means. And then Chapter 688 for students who are looking at adult services beyond either graduation or age 22.
There's one chip. That's good. So you, there's enough.
I was able to get quite a bit in. So some of those could be probably just dial a little bit more spelled out. And these will lead you right into those DESI links. So if parents have a question or a thought about one of them and are having difficulty navigating their way through DESI, they can go right into our website and jump into one of them.
It's a really nice time saver, Ms. Swonka, because DESI is an overwhelming site to navigate.
There is so much. Some other informational documents that may not be necessarily DESI documents, but are important documents for people. Our parents' notice of procedural safeguards, which they get with every initial and reevaluation IUP, but there it is on our website. The AURICA Autism Insurance Resource Center for families who have students who fall into this category. There is some insurance resources, depending upon what your own personal insurance might be and what you're eligible for, but how you can get some extra services, sometimes in your home, so on and so forth. The updated prevention of physical restraint law. Very near and dear to the district, our Castle Wheel and the MTSS visual to kind of explain it in a very shortened kind of a way, but people can see what it all entails there. Our tiered focus monitoring that we go through in our cycles and the school-based Medicaid program. So if anyone, you know, hears references to any of these or, you know, I or one of the team chairs happened to say it in a meeting and they want more information, we tell people exactly where they can find some of this information. As all of you know, I send out a parent survey with every single IUP. So there is a copy of the parent survey here on our website, as is the team meeting summary form that goes home after every IEP team meeting. There's a blank here for people to look at. And also, if you remember, this year we instituted meeting agendas. If you're having a review meeting or an initial or reevaluation meeting, you can see the agenda, what's going to go on in the meeting when, when it goes home to the families, but they're also right here on the website. So here I have our CPAC. This first link, the co-host CPAC brings you right to the co-host CPAC page. But then these following links are the presentations that have gone on on CPAC, which we have memorialized and kept here for people to click on and, and be able to look at and just view them, you know, just because they were perhaps, you know, at a previous year's meeting where people may or may not have attended, they're memorialized here for people to go back to. And then we have our guides. So our special education process guide is a new guide updated from the 2018 guide that was on there. It is streamlined in the sense that it is shorter and has in it references to links to take you places. So instead of having all of the DESI language right into it, you can go, you can, you know, follow a link and go into it that way. So that's really kind of nice. And you can see here that it is 56 pages long. So it's not too unwieldy to read through and look at. But you can see that it covers all of the areas in special education and then refers to some of the forms that are in the Aspen system that we use as well as, of course, you know, one of the DESI ones not popping up now, but yeah, here they are. Educational assessment, so on and so forth, procedural safeguards, all of those kinds of things. In addition to that, we have the 504 process guide, which we also updated since I came on board. Our ELL process guide is the one that, you know, was here and is the one we're kind of looking at next. And then a guide to our programs and services right here in district for parents to always be able to take a look at and see what we have. And, and it was just really important to me to, to really revamp this, to tighten it up and to make it a little bit cleaner as well as informational and to be able to share it with all of you and with the community that is watching and let everyone know that they can, they can access it. We put it in the navigator that had undergone a revamping and it's, you know, if you happen to enter through my office, there's a little sign on my table there that says, please visit our new website. So.
So much to act. Really good. It's great. That's a lot of work.
Please. With the preschool lottery and application, can you remind me how that information is shared out into the community? Because a lot of times those families aren't in the district yet, so they're not getting emails from us. So can you just remind us how that?
So, yeah, so that gets published through the navigator. It also goes out through Osgood. And it is, you know, on our website too. Preschool parents, even though they are not registered in the district yet, they are very aware in the community that this is going on. They start calling us and asking us about this. And it, it, I don't think we're certainly missing anyone through, based on the, the reaction that we are receiving.
Usually calls.
Then usually they call.
Or it's published and, or they go to the website, which is good. It's on here.
Right.
But I don't, do you have thoughts on how to advertise it? Roadside? No, it's good.
No, I mean, I don't, and I don't, I feel like I'm kind of shit. No, I know, I do. Do it all the time. That's why they joke about it because that's, it's me. That's not for our school. But I'm just wondering like, so like I know when we're advertising kindergarten, we go to all the preschools in the area, but like can daycares in the area be sharing this information with families? Because if you have your, your infant, a toddler in daycare and then you're thinking, how sweet would it be to be in a public preschool and just share that link and, and share that information so that they could push it out to families and then, and then having that perhaps higher level of interest would better support our budget need.
Yes.
I got you guys.
Question free for all.
Only the chair can, only the chair can afford this. This is the.
So it's reverse alphabetical order.
Nothing. All right. All right.
Like the Wiccan local and pediatrician's office.
Yeah, that would be helpful too. I think just, just, you know, if you're not in the district yet, you're not getting this.
Particularly as it's, it's, it's going to, you know, be a larger.
Yeah. So I think the pediatrician's offices and the. Yeah. So maybe just thinking, or we can email. I'll send you the email.
Mr. Swonka.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Mr. Swonka, you noticed this, you noted, you noted the special education process guide and the 504 process guide were updated since you arrived. ELL process guide has not been updated since you arrived?
Not yet. That's next.
Okay. When we say next, what do we mean? How, like, when do you, when do you anticipate that?
So we have a new ELL teacher on board and she's just been really wonderful and wonderfully received by the district and she's very kind of proactive in her approach. So I'm letting her kind of, you know, do her teacher thing in our district for this for a while. And then once I feel like, you know, she's really kind of.
That's freedom.
Yeah. And I, I don't mean that she doesn't, but when I, when I feel like, you know, she really does, she and I are going to engage in some conversations around and work together on that process guide. So I would see myself working on it probably later this spring into the summer. And then, you know, we'll, we'll vet it through as I did, you know, the other process guides, the proper channels and then be able to.
All part-time, right?
Any comments from Mr. Swonka? So I, I love that you're making this stuff accessible and easy for the, for the community. So that's, this is a great step. One of the things that I know that I hear, that I know that I, I do hear from people who are engaging in special education processes, that it is complicated. We talk about that a lot, a lot as a committee. So things like this that make information more accessible, I think is very valuable to, we appreciate that. So thank you.
If people would like a data update, I can take a few minutes and talk about our, our data for the month.
Oh, yes. One every day.
Yep.
There's a few. There are a few.
Yeah, there's people watching.
Special education parents watching.
So in the month of December, our annual reviews totaled to five at the elementary level and 10 at the secondary level. So we had 15 meetings inside of our district.
I'm sorry. Can you just put it in slideshow mode so it's bigger? Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you.
That's better than I thought it was.
It couldn't only be my eyes. Thank you.
So within the district, you can see that we had 15 annual reviews across the month of December. Reevaluations at the elementary, there were five reevaluations. One of them, you know, was a little bit of a celebratory meeting and then a student was no longer requiring services and no longer eligible. At the secondary level, six reevaluation meetings and three of them resulted in students getting off IUPs.
And what was my celebratory? Do you mean that the families were also sharing this celebration?
Yes.
Okay, great. So awesome.
So at the elementary level, we have, we had three initial evaluation meetings. Two of those students were found eligible. When they were not, at the secondary level, there were three initial evaluation meetings and all of them were found eligible. Oh, I'm sorry. Jumped into January. It's like, what just happened? And then as far as initial evaluations and the referral sources at the elementary level, all three of those came from parents. And at the secondary level, two of them came through the MTSS team and one of them came from a parent. So it, it's really nice to see. The secondary MTSS teams are always kind of a little bit of a different beast than the elementary ones. And they are really fully fleshing out and it's nice to see that. We haven't had any interpedative evaluations to go over during the month of December.
Before, I guess I'll, I'll jump in. So the elementary initial evaluation referral source, we have three from parents. Two were found, well, I guess two were found to be eligible for services. That's based on that initial. When we get data like that, do we look to see if there's something within MTSS that we should change? Is there a reason why it didn't show up through our detection and instead was referred by parents? I guess, how do we, how do we think about that for?
Yeah, it, it does cause us to kind of look at that and look at, especially when we find, you know, two of those eligible. You know, what, what was it? Was it a situation that perhaps they hadn't gone all the way through MTSS, but parents were concerned enough to want to move forward more quickly? And that, you know, that, that may have been appropriate and that they were found eligible for some services and so on and so forth. But we, yeah, we do take a look at those reasons and, you know, what, what is going on there.
And then without getting into specifics, obviously for common jod reasons. And maybe not, maybe zooming out from December, but when we have seen these situations in the past where we've looked, we've found parent evaluations that resulted in students being eligible for services, have we found any areas where we've made improvements to our MTSS process to address those issues?
It, it's an interesting question. I would say, yes, we have improved in our MTSS system and we definitely have done that. But we have to look at the focus of MTSS as well, because the focus of MTSS really is to be able to help students within that process and within the general education side of the house. Certainly, special education referral can be an outgrowth of that, but it isn't simply a pipeline to that. So I, I just want to clarify that perception, not perception, but clarify that for anyone who may be watching, that it's very important that, you know, the MTSS process is strong and yes, we have made improvements to it. I feel like it has gotten stronger and is continuing to. That being said, it is also not inappropriate for referrals to come from families and for us to act and move with families quickly sometimes in some ways, because oftentimes that's why we take that information from families, because what they're seeing at home is so valuable to us. And sometimes what we see at school doesn't always match that. And that, that is an important piece to that.
Particularly at the lower elementary level when you're just getting, no, there's the, it's, it's possible.
Yes. Yep. So yes, I, I think it's important to always look at critically and see if there are areas of improvement and see if it needs to be doing more than it is doing. But I think we're very much on the right track, both in our kind of developed MTSS process and also in our responsiveness to families.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I'm just wondering, you know, because it came up in this, in December, that a child came off of an IEP. Can you speak to that process of what happens? What systems are put in place for that child who has been receiving services under a legally binding document? And is now, the testing now shows that that is not necessary anymore.
The testing and the classroom progress.
Okay. So then can you just kind of illustrate for the committee what's next? I just know, you know, from kind of a, being in the classroom point of view and also just we're all parents here, like that feels very vulnerable. Can you speak to how the district supports that child and the family in that transition and ensures that they are continuing to see the progress that they saw on an IEP?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And what you have to remember is that while we have a school year that runs September to June, the IEP does not necessarily, so for example, if we are looking at students for reevaluation, their IEP ran from the previous December to this December. So that was the whole timeframe within which they were working on the skills for that particular IEP. So, so that's an important distinction and understanding to have. The other thing that's important about this is the reevaluation is the natural place where we do, we redo the testing and we look at the progress in the classroom. And we automatically as part of that process, look at their continuing eligibility. And we automatically as part of that process, look at their continuing eligibility for an IEP. When a student comes off an IEP through a reevaluation process, usually usually what has happened is that students have been receiving these services, obviously for at least three years because this is the third year. And usually services have been decreasing as the student has been gaining in skills. Those particular IEP services aren't usually continuing at the rate at which they were perhaps in the beginning or shortly after the beginning. There's been kind of a natural kind of progression of the student gaining skills and perhaps not needing as much service. Um, that being said, a couple of things have to happen. The testing has to show that the student is able to, you know, no longer require those services, but also the classroom progress has to show that too. So the the student has to be really not as so dependent upon their IEP services in order to make effective progress. They have to be able to be showing that they have some independence in that in order to come off an IEP. So those two things have to be going on. So it really shows that the student both in their abilities and in what they are showing in their performance are ready for this step. But in addition to that, you know, the classroom, the general education classroom teacher is always there at the IEP meeting and keeps an eye on that and how the student is continuing once they come off that IEP and those services to make that progress without it as well as, um, you know, we are always saying to the families, you know, we are very confident in this decision. They're usually obviously joining with us in this decision and really seeing this as something for their child. But if something should suddenly, you know, not look right, you know, three weeks from now, a month from now, so on and so forth. Um, this testing is still new. You know, it's it's still valid testing. And if you need to reach out to us and we need to kind of revisit that with you, you know, we are still here with you. And that general education teacher who has been a part of this process, you know, because they are that child's teacher all along, continues to be that child's teacher and would notice a change.
We're also looking at it through the MTSS process and if a student dips, that clearly is a breath like.
Right.
And we would reboot that and we would look at it as as a child who was once on an individual education.
Mm hmm.
And and that would be a factor determining what steps we take.
Absolutely.
That's an important step. It's not like the student, like the heart of the question was, I hear it really loud and clear that we've had this student who's receiving either intensive somewhat intensive, lessening intensity supports. It has been succeeding. And when you take either a little or more than a little away, there's a fear on the families that, you know, say it it could be a sort of a sinking feeling that they were succeeding and now are they going to succeed without that that help? That we're measuring that and looking at that closely. So if the student dips in the MTSS process, we'd be able to reassert a need and work with that family, right?
Another piece to it is too, that the point of an IEP is specialized instruction.
That's right.
And that's a really important and critical piece to an IEP is that is what is really being delivered. Sometimes students come off an IEP, but they continue to need certain accommodations to kind of level the playing field so that you continue. And while certainly a 504 isn't kind of a lesser or consolation prize, it is appropriate sometimes when a student is coming off an IEP but continues to need some accommodations and sometimes this does happen to immediately go into a 504 meeting and say, what we are recognizing here is that the student no longer requires specialized instruction, but may require some accommodations. And the makeup of the team will shift a little and a 504 meeting will take place. And then that kind of a plan will be in place so that all of the teachers who receive that student realize that while they don't continue to need specialized instruction, they do still get some of the accommodations that were on perhaps their original IEP because they continue to need those to make this progress. And that is the place for them. It's not for all students all of the time, but that is another sometimes piece that goes into place as that step down, if you will.
And I'm curious, is that kind of um coming off of an IP and going on to a 504, which is not the appropriate track for everybody?
Right.
Is that, have you been in a meeting like that here? And was it initiated by the district or by the family?
It was initiated by the district.
Okay, that's good to hear. I just think like that is a really important piece to obviously be keeping in mind.
Parents do not have to ask for that. Then as as the district professionals may recognize, I sometimes advocate for that.
And as you know, Lydia, I just think.
I'm just kind of asking these questions for general, like I know most of us, but it's good to hear what's happening.
No, and I was gonna make a point that just sort of, it was like, they're both team processing.
Yeah.
Uh for as a team process, just like the IEP. I didn't want someone to lose to lose the idea of initiated by to mean that there isn't a team involved with both processes.
And thank you for that clarification.
You know, but I didn't.
And then what role would a D cap play in this whole process?
So the D cap is an integral part of our MTSS process and is actually part of our MTSS meeting so that teachers, families are aware of all of those accommodations that are regularly available to all students. And then what other tiered accommodations might be needed for the students who are going through the MTSS process? And then those are an integral part of, okay, we already have all of this knowledge of this student through MTSS and through those accommodations. What of those need to transfer into a 504 or an IEP? What ones have been really successful?
The D caps available on the website, so it has been a management. And it's been revamped.
In line with the informal approach, D cap, sometimes it's helpful to say the acronyms are.
The district curriculum accommodation. And the MTSS um task force that I oversee um continues to work on not just the MTSS meetings and methodology and, you know, continuing to improve that, but also on the D cap. And and that's a huge focus for us.
And MTSS is again multi-tier system of sports, system, student sports, system of sports. System of sports. I I messed that up too.
There are students, we'll start with us.
I know.
So can I just, I just, I do though want to, I mean, because the, I feel that the committee does take a fairly skeptical approach to this. I just want to make sure the the administration and therefore the district does as well. In line with Mr. Dial's comments, we should be in in acknowledging the points that that Dr. Sullivan and Mr. Wong made that oftentimes parents are uniquely outfitted with certain information to help identify students for special education student services, especially at the early elementary ed levels, like you said, Dr. Sullivan. I I do think we we should always look at a figure like that though and be skeptical about it. Say, okay, well, yes, the parents might have had more information, but what is, what what is lacking in our identification measures that made it so that we didn't see that, you know, because we spend a lot of hours with them targeting, you know, academic areas. I mean, they, if this, these things might manifest themselves while they're eating dinner or playing or doing things at home. But we're the ones that are focusing on academics and we should be identifying these things. So there may be opportunities for additional sort of identification specific, you know, professional developments or whatever it might be for the general ed teachers. Just put MTSS aside. Just just put it aside. Just forget about it. There there, we need to make sure that we have the most up to date crest of the wave identification measures that we're employing that the that the classroom teachers are outfitted with so that, because to me, I look at these month to month and I'm thinking to myself, every time, that's the first thing I look at. And I knew that what Chairman Dial was going to say before he said it because it's 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 glaring. Why, why is MTSS zero and parent three? Like I look at it like a scoreboard, right? And I know, I know it shouldn't be, but that's the way I look at it. I want us to approach that as a district. We want to be, because we want to be sort of uh critical of ourselves. Okay, so just, I I just, I I am just expressing that thought and I I just want you to take that and 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 maybe apply that approach as much as possible. And are these, I I might have missed it, are they just really quick, is, are these reports which are great that you've started to do, are they, are they on that CPAC section of the student service? The CPAC and presentations section of your website? I might have missed it while you were talking about it.
Are, is this slideshow on there?
Yeah, yes.
No, it is not.
This is a data, this is the data, the the way that Mr. Wong is showing data to you.
Right.
So 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 she builds slide by slide, the month by month, that information.
But I I think, I mean, maybe I'm wrong. I mean, I think that it might be of interest to people. I mean, there's nothing confidential about it, I don't think.
No, there isn't, but I just haven't done or presented this in any CPAC meetings. So I haven't made it a part of the CPAC.
Okay, okay. Well, that's, I just think I I was just using that category as the most maybe applicable, but I don't care where it appears. I just want people, I want families to be able to access it because I think it's it it helps with the transparency, transparency optics for us, you know, hey, this is what's going on here. And just more information out there, I think the better. Because our special education services have been under, I think, a unique critique from families as of late. And I'm not saying that's it's warranted or unwarranted. I'm just saying that it has been an area for, I think that we've made, we've taken rates to rise in. And I think that we we can continue to do that by providing this information.
Sure. I'd also like to request that the school year to date, so like September through whatever month we're in, is included in the packet before we arrive at the meeting so that we can preview it. It's just for me at least easier to think about questions when I've had a preview of the information.
For families as well.
Yeah.
Mrs. Stain, I think, I think it should be posted so that the parents can ask questions about it too.
Just as a document, as a PDF included, so like September up until whatever date we're reporting on. It's important to see that.
Sure, I'm going to start including that in the packet.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Wong? Thank you very much, Ms. Wong. That was an excellent presentation and before to them going forward. Um, and with that, that concludes agenda item E. Moving on to agenda item F, budget, resources, governance. We'll go through our typical items here. We have a standing agenda item, food service update. This may have been a carryover from a prior meeting, but I think you may have jumped in and covered it, but helps desk anything from a food services perspective we wanted to bring, bring up at this meeting.
No, I don't, I mean, I don't think so. Charlie.
Yeah, you did it up.
Pretty much. I was gonna say, Charlie, the new kitchen's up and running, the snare room is up and running, and traffic is moving, um because they have, you know, more directions to go through the kitchen instead of one way out. Um, and the students are loving it.
Great. I guess we'll call that a, call that. It is red and we'll go into budget finance. This is a known, our director of finance and operations.
You, you have the power to share.
I have.
Sounds impressive. Power to share.
We all have power to share.
I wish I didn't have power to share.
I didn't say that.
Oh, wow.
Do you have the power to share?
I have the power. Here we go. There it is. Small.
Just give it a navigation.
Or if you go to view full screen and get rid of the navigation tab, that'll pop it right up.
View full screen.
Up top.
See, it says file home, insert, draw, design, layout, references, mailings, review. Yep, keep going to the right. Keep going to the right.
It's blocked out. It's blocked off by.
You gotta move the people.
Oh, there it is.
That's his word and not.
Yeah.
I resent my comment. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
That's good. Just shrink it and move it over a little bit.
There we go.
Yeah, perfect.
We'll call that, we'll call that a go.
So this is, this is the guidance report um through the month of December. Um, I'm not going to read all the numbers because they don't change every year. We are 50% through our school year, our fiscal year. Um, and our school budget is 46.2%. Um, so we're, we're spending conservatively. We're, you know, a little ahead of the game. We've accommodated supplies and materials that we know of. Um, we have remaining amounts that will cover all the unencumbered in the remaining salaries throughout the year. So really no, no, um no, no room for any concern at this point. Because, you know, if we were at 60%, I might say, you know, a little hesitation, but we're, we're at 46 and we're 50% through the year. So that's great. Uh, tuition is another big area that we look at, has not changed, which is great. We have with, we have minus $74,000, but that's still only due to one transfer from a collaborative to a private school. So that's also good news that our uh special education is kind of status quo. Nobody's coming in, nobody's going out, which is also great. Again, I give you um just a breakdown of the budget per school. And you could see we're all, um, high school is a little bit higher. Sorry. Um, we're all 40%, 38%, 37% and 44%. So again, we're, we're still less than 50%, which is what we have to know for the year, which is also great. Circuit breaker, um, again, just gives an explanation for what circuit breaker is. It's a reimbursement for our special education tuitions. The difference in circuit breaker from last year to this year is about 458,000 dollars, which will certainly help us offset our FY24 budget, uh which is also great news. They've been fully steady at 75% reimbursement rate. Our capital projects for FY23 all have been completed. Um, everything is spent, which is also great. Half of the year, we've been all projects done for facilities with an integral part of this because they really jumped on, jumped on a lot of the projects over the year. Capital, so I have capital on here as well. We had a financial facilities subcommittee yesterday and the thought was to remove item 14, which was the $200,000 generator. I'm just looking for school committee to give approval of that. With the information that facilities has given us, we have standby generators on contract that we need one. Um, they will deliver. We also have small generators that will keep the cafeteria food up and running. They're here within the first six to 12 hours according to facilities, when, you know, when we lose our power anyways. And according to director, the director of food service, it takes um up to 48 hours for that that food to start to thaw. So I thought was, you know, to try to be a little more conservative, we took the $200,000, much as we would love to see a generator for odds good. Being a school that doesn't have one, most schools, almost all schools have generators. We do have a plan in place to um have standby generator on contract or use the four ones that we have purchased. So we removed item 14.
Yeah, we didn't think we'd get much traction with that one, based on the fact that there, there is solutions provided that at least will will work in an emergent situation. So.
I think we need to maybe double check that 40 hour thing.
I just pulled up the FDA
I don't think I.
Information about that. And it says if the freezer is fully packed, it will stay frozen for 48 hours. If it's less than fully packed 24 hours, it's what you can hang on.
Yeah, we'll just.
So I. Yeah, I'm just saying like.
With.
Yeah.
This is. All right.
Right. That's like ideal scenario.
And again, I mean, the, the, the point of that was facilities, the second we lose power, uh field facilities department comes to the buildings to make sure they're running and they would flip the switch to turn those generators off.
Sure. I mean, I'm just saying that, I, what I'm saying is, is maybe we need to replace food. It's, I, I just, it's sound, it just makes me nervous.
We certainly wouldn't wait for eight hours.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm saying. I just, and maybe I just maybe need to speak to, to Mrs. Sarin about that.
We certainly wouldn't.
I'm not saying she's doing that. Putting it out there, sounds wrong.
Exactly what you're saying. No, exactly what you're saying. I'm, I'm just, you know, showing that it can go that long based on what the numbers are, but our facilities department usually hits our buildings. No, exactly what you're saying, no, exactly what you're saying, I'm, I'm just, you know, showing that it can go that long, based on what the numbers are, but our facilities department usually hits our buildings one of the first hour or two that we're out.
Sure.
So they would, they would have the generators running to run those freezers.
So for this, though, you need a approved motion from the committee to adopt the revised budget.
Yes.
So the only change in here, the deletion of Item 14.
Yes.
Recommendation the administration.
It is, with endorsement from the Finance and Facilities Committee. We reviewed this just this week.
Excellent, so I, that's my next stop, so what Finance, Facilities Committee also recommends, so with that, for those recommendations, to have a motion to approve the capital funds for FY24 as presented with their bill of duty. Mr. Carr, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? So that motion passes, and that's in its own, you have a revised capital funds to work with now.
The grants, I'll just give you a list of grants, we're pointing to the state and federal, and it gives, it gives you a list of several grants, obviously, we don't, we don't get a lot of grants, but we do have some, same ones, the S R, the S R one will go away, we're just expending the balance through this year, and then that will be the other bias of grants, and the rest are titled to a, we have two special education grants, two for early childhood, we have the title one, and we have the title four, the 309, and then we have the micro grant. And we have the revolving accounts, we talked a little bit about it in the Finance Subcommittee meeting, we're, we're going through in detail some of these accounts, so I know Mr. Kearney has asked about the remaining balances, so some of these, like, they get placement fees, so that $8,000, we can't reallocate. Anyway, that's definitely students have put money in there for their placement fees, and other fees, so, you know, $8,000 is not sufficient to reallocate. The PSO, same thing, the PSO and the CEF also designate what the funding, those, those funding is for, they're, they're both groups are very good about looking at what's left, I know last year, and the fourth, you know, there was about $7,000 of unused funding, and they just reallocated that to the next upcoming grant award, and then cut us a check for the difference. Same thing with the school insurance, again, that's replacing things like the press box to move after school program, actually funds the program, and some of staffing in there, athletic revolving, we still have athletic preschool, kindergarten, all similar, they, they pay for a portion of our teaching staff, or our support staff, and supplies and materials in those groups, so there isn't really an excess in funding in any of those, because we still have half a year to go paying those salaries. One of the ones we are looking at.
Susan, sorry, is that a normal, you pay salaries for the revolving?
Yes.
For, for that area?
For that. For that area.
For that, okay.
For that particular project, so preschool pays proportionally, preschool teachers.
Okay, thank you. That's an important thing, yeah.
Correct. The one item again, the school sort of facilities, we're still in a minus, we're just starting to recap some of the funding that we've lost by raising our custodial fees, which we did a few months back. One of the areas that I know Mr. Kearney was looking at is, you know, what do we have extras, so we're going through the school committee gifts, $9,000. That's not just school committee gifts, within that group, and we're trying to break it out, are any, like, donations and gifts that have gone to Asgood, it's DHL as well. I'm not sure why it's not separated out, so we are in the process of separating that out, to be Asgood, a lot of Asgoods are like box tops, you know, when they collect box tops, and they, they purchase supplies and materials that we normally have in their regular supply materials budget. So we're still working on that, we have to drill down and go back years.
Do we keep track of when the gift comes in, sometimes it gives our earmark for something specific, right? We keep track of that somehow?
Yes, that's exactly what we're going through right now, and I know that Mr. Kearney was looking for, there's already remaining funds that aren't earmarked, that we could reallocate somewhere.
Perfect.
So we're working on that, it's just, it's a bigger project, because it doesn't go through our software, our kind of software, it's, it's been kept in separate spreadsheets or workbooks, it's.
On, on that one, I'm glad, I've seen this line, I've been curious about it, I kind of love those gifts for the school committee, but it's not.
Some of it, when they say gifts, you know, most of them, like Mr. Carroll said, they're designated for something, so I mean, I have.
My only point, we don't need to go through them now, my only point was, I'd love for us to, people giving schools things, doing things with, I'd love for us to deploy that, you know, so people said, you know, let's buy books, let's go buy the books, it's not doing our students, they're sitting in the bank.
Correct, and, and that's, that's exactly what those are for, so we're actually still going through to get clarity on other, other any remaining fund, funds that could be reality.
Thank you.
This is just a breakdown, I know there's been, you know, conversations about FTEs and where they are within the district, so it's just trying, you know, transparency, those are the FTEs, and how they're broken down by category, based on DESI guidelines.
And I always forget, there's this 274, that's the human beings, 222 is the FTEs.
Yes.
But the 274 is not a full count, that does not include the revolving account, is that correct?
This, this particular side is strictly school budget, so right below this, you'll see, I think, oh, sorry, it was a. Up above, you'll see here, for the revolving, revolving has an additional 25.5 FTEs.
And then grants is 13.
Yes.
Can we, in going forward, have a line item that's total human beings?
Yes.
Because we can't have that, just to, that'd be helpful.
Certainly, I can combine them. This kind of gives you just a breakdown of what our salaries cost, so out of our, out of our $22,000 budget, 18, 18,880,000 is designated to salaries.
What is an undistributed salary?
It's not special education or regular education, it, it's not distributed either, so it could be.
So it's, it's distributed in the sense that it's paid, but it's not earmarked for general or special education.
Correct.
Does that number 18, does that include our portion of like insurance payments and things like that?
Strictly.
Strictly salaries. They call that fringe, I don't know what they call it.
I added, I added this slide, so again, I know there's some questions we cast about FTEs and transparency, so I started putting together, and you can see, here's the Asgood and the DHL, and, and what the FTEs are, you know, how many teachers, how many kindergarten teachers, how many grade one teachers, and then how many have funded the grants revolving, and how many have funded your budget, so. So you can kind of see a comparison, I mean, the two elements are very similar, and they're in the, in the FTEs, the middle and high school are a little bit different, obviously, you know, different subject areas.
In one, one.
This is, this is, this is, this is great, I very much love it. I'll, I'll repeat the ask on the human beings, if we can add that, I don't know if that's a key to add, maybe less relevant to this thing, but this is, I very much appreciate this.
That's true. And again, at the high school, you can see, you know, high school definitely has more FTEs, but high school, again, the custodial count is all the high school, so that's one of the reasons that number is higher than the middle school, not to say that it's not higher because we have more teachers, but we also have, you know, all the custodians are grouped through the high school.
And like the Asgood, is it, do we have five or six kindergarten teachers? Six?
Six.
Six. But three salaries are paid through our budget, and then the others are paid through the.
Oh, thank you, yes, this should have been three. In the next column.
Okay.
So you can see the column to the right says grants revolving FTEs, there should be a three there, which would be the total.
The other half, yes, I was gonna say, I know we have more than three.
Correct.
Yeah.
Eagle line and St. Art.
Well, there's probably, there's the first generation of this thing, so.
I think also because we're talking about inner tuition, like, that's a particularly important line to pay attention to.
So, you know, again, a breakdown of our, our gas and electric, nothing concerning. Just, just giving an update, and here again, the total grants, FTEs, the head counts, it's just a matter of, just a matter of combining it all.
Oh, yeah, there's your head count, there you humans.
There my humans.
So there's the grants, and here are the. Services, as we talked about, the serving line is in, students are loving it, it looks really nice, vending machines in, it's a big cell, a lot of times you see a line of the vending machine.
Who reinstocks that? The vending machine?
The food service.
In-house?
Yeah, in-house, yes, we, we own the machine, so, yeah. And then transportation, so we have contracted with Daco to at least hold eight new school buses for us, as at least it's gonna expire, the current lease, or the upcoming lease for the buses will be $151,131, so it's a possible four-year plan. New lease will be for the same number of buses, but they'll be new, they don't, you know, we're looking, we're looking at the specifications, we don't, we don't like the flat nose buses, they want to go back to the old style buses.
What's that?
The supervisor, supervisor transportation.
Right.
Why? It seems safer to me. Flat nose, visibility with kids walking in front of them.
Well, why don't we get an answer?
Didn't know, I didn't think you would have the answer.
And that's something you've been talking about for like over a year, the, the flat nose versus.
Right, I, I asked him, there is, there is a reason they don't like the flat nose.
Maybe it feels less safe for the driver or something like that, I don't know, we'll find out.
Yeah.
Well, we're also working up the details on our first electric bus, the contract, you know, we've been, the contract review, town council is looking at it. Tanya Odell went through it with fine tooth comb.
Oh, she got the red line?
I did get the red line, I got the red line agreement, only because she knew all the details, all the conversations, and we're on that third sales rep, so a lot of the information was left out of what we communicated, so we're going through that right now. And athletics, as you can see, our, our field is, our turf is three quarters of the way done, and I know with the warmer weather coming this week, minus the rain, they're, they're talking about trying to get out, yeah, and do some more work, most of the stuff is done, it's, it's all done, it's a matter of, it's in lining, they have to do, and some of the small details, but we're, we're ahead of the game, we're behind the game, behind the game where we started, but we're, it will be about what we'd be right now, so it looks like if, if it enters spring at all, it's gonna be a good year too. And then just go with the facility updates, and what, what we did over break, or should say, what, what happened in the district over break, and I'm sure there was many more things going on in this, but we completed the lighting upgrade at the Asgood Elementary School, so we still have the DHL to do. All the schools changed, all the air purifier filters, some of them are really, really dirty, and some of them haven't even been used, so it was kind of, kind of interesting to see that some, some staff are not using them. They all scrubbed all our hallways in the schools, they stripped and waxed the floor by the new high school lab, science lab upstairs, upstairs, we are upstairs, right? Only because the lab got finished the same way the school was starting, so they didn't have time to actually strip and wax those floors, that area, all, all exterior locks, all schools have been replaced, and.
Control the keys.
Yeah, we now have control of who has keys and who doesn't, and it, we simplify it, so one key fits the whole school, per school, and then there's a set, there's a handful of graphic keys, that's one key to fix all exterior doors and walls.
The bins are very controlled.
We're not giving out keys, we are adding fobs in every area, so cafeteria, darkroom area, the locker room back door, and then the fob, so the window needs to have keys.
And the fire. Usually access.
Are those, if this is not the best place to ask this question, Charlie, if I worked at Asgood, and I have my card to move into Asgood, and then I came up here and tried to move in on this door, would I be, no, okay, good.
And you're actually time.
Time sensitive, yeah, good, so it's, it's everything's programmed, just, yeah.
Access.
It gives you access to.
Like unless you're a multi-school teacher.
Certain, certain buildings, but that's very limited population.
Control with that much.
It's limited to building.
Specificity, which is great.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, that's pretty.
You don't boop in, please?
I don't boop, I mean, I would love to boop, I like the, I like the verb, I don't have a booper.
That concludes the December update, but we have other things to discuss, budget and finance, so if there's no questions on that.
Anyone think, I do have one question on the report, but before I do, yeah, questions, okay.
Comment, great presentation.
I'm trying to grow it.
Your data, great chance.
I am, I may sort of, you're trying, but the $308,000 we have revolving, how do we get some of that, can we use some of that to get a chef, $75,000 for that? So how do we go about doing that, like, so that we can roll it out for the 2023, 24 school year?
Can we make a motion and pass it?
So, so this was discussed, I just motioned.
Yeah.
So I just, I just, we don't need to do that, I just, I just.
Just have to look at it with all of them.
Which, yeah, we just need to basically incorporate it into the budget, what I'm saying is, it's not necessarily an ask, because we have $300,000 sitting there revolving, it, it may, it's kind of similar to a grant, because it's, that's not an infinite amount of supply money, but it'll help us roll it out quickly. And I'm just wondering, that, that could be a huge value add to our food services, because then, then Mrs. Herden doesn't have to also develop, the chef can develop menus, source better, better ingredients from local areas, do, do all the menu development, and then she can just administer the entire department without having to do that as well, so it'll, it'll increase our offerings and improve the quality some days.
So what do we gotta do to get that?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking, that's exactly what I'm asking.
So I think that's, that's an operational issue for the administration, they have the right to use that revolving account for money related to food expenditures, given that it's a focus of the committee, you know, I'd like to hear from the administration as to, you know, the, the food certification, but it's also something that would be improved for the food service subcommittee, so both of those, I think, are areas, but I, I don't think action on the committee's part is required, is not to.
The first thing, we'd have to weigh our needs in food service with this excellent request, in terms of how we're using that revolving fund, and that's one avenue, the other avenue, because obviously you can do salary side of that, but the other avenue would be to look at our, our budget requests in the whole, and we haven't voted on the budget yet, and when we, when we present the budget, to put that, if that's a determination that we want to do, I think there's some conversations, yeah. So why don't we have a subcommittee meeting just on that? What would they do to, right, and be hired?
Sure. Maybe, that's exactly what I'm asking, so what is, so we've already discussed, we want, we want, we want the chef, so what, what other conversations do we need to have here, some, you put it on the agenda, and have a conversation here, or internally with you Doug Sullivan and Saren and Soren, or what do we need to decide if we want to do that?
So I think I, I would respectfully disagree with you a bit, I think we need to bring Ms. Herden back in to have some more discussions with the committee regarding her view on having the chef in the subcommittee, and make sure that we have all the, the unintended consequences of doing that on the table, but I don't mean to derail the idea, you know, I, I think it's a, I think it has great merit, I just think it's, I don't know that we, although there is excitement on the team, I don't know that we fully have vetted every contingency in getting a chef, so I would, I would, I would want to put that as a, as a, as an agenda item, really talk about it, and then the second step, if that. And then the second step, if that's satisfied, would be to approach it in two particular ways. One would be to look at our revolving account and the needs of our revolving account. And then i- if, if that was indeed an avenue, that, that could be a possibility. And if it wasn't, and we had decided as a team that this is something we want, then we would, we would put it on the budget.
Okay, send on.
I'm just curious, as a comparative, this exploration and doing our due diligence have, has, has it been looked into? If like local comparable districts have chefs and how does that compare?
So, so the, so local districts, no. Some comparable districts do. It's a, it's not something that's, it's like a, it would be like a, an improvement that I don't think it's like a, a, a widely utilized employee just yet amongst public schools. Like I'm looking to be proactive and my, this, this didn't arise from me being like, hey, let's get a chef. I asked the director of food services, what, what is, you must know what are some, some great food service school programs that you know of? Like she's in that industry, right? So she, you could rattle off some, some great teachers and situate, right? Well, she's, she's aware of great food programs. She, she, she told me a few and I said, okay, what, what is, what's the difference? So well, they, they have chef. So okay. And, and I asked her, how much do you think that would be? She said about seventy-five thousand dollars. And that was a ballpark figure, I'm sure we need to do a little bit more digging on that. But, so I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to do is put cohesion on the crest of the wave in terms of food service offerings. And that seems to be a common denominator amongst districts that have a good food service offering, is that they have chefs.
Right. And, and to your point, Sharon's school system, right? I was looking for a chef, forty hours a week, two hundred and ten days per year.
Sharon's the premier school district.
So these, this is.
I'm not disagreeing with you guys, I'm asking for more information.
Yeah, no.
And I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm just curious of districts who do indeed already have a chef. What has their experience been? How has quality improved, have offerings improved? How, you know, there's obviously like federal regulations about where food can come from. How have they been able to source things more creatively? Like I went to school in Iran, people did stuff, do stuff like this all the time in Iran. It's very, you know, kale and apples and it's delicious, but like it's, it's also hard to do. And I'm just curious how it's kind of played out.
This is the time to dive into that conversation. I, I, I just put out, I'm sorry, but I just put out that I, I think, I don't know that we've fully had the discussion.
This is, this was my question, guys. How do we make it happen? So what do we need to do? What's the next step? And you're saying, so you're saying subcommittee, you're saying it's operational, you're saying maybe we discuss it, we just.
No, it's operational, but it's been you.
I'll propose this.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think there's some questions and I, and I think you, the food service subcommittee and, and finance, finance have done some good work. I think hearing a readout from that, those findings would be interesting to the committee as a whole. If the, if, if it is self-financing or it can be financed through revolving account, I don't think any action is necessary on the part of the committee. If it is not financing, manage that way, I mean, the budget request, there might be action. So that would be something that we need to assess. It sounds like Dr. Sullivan, there might be some additional wood to chop as far as getting the recommendation from the administration.
Yeah.
And so some, some more work to do.
I think so.
So I would, I would propose this. I don't want this to languish and die on the vine, but and I want the table, I'm using all sorts of food.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going with the chopper.
The chopper. Beaver. Point is, I think, let's, I want this, let's do this on an, on an agenda item, but expeditiously, I don't, I don't know if we'll be ready by the next meeting.
Because we are, and why isn't food and nutrition subcommittee meet, have this in-depth conversation?
Okay.
Maybe develop some concepts to present to the school committee, just as an update? And then you can have your leadership discussion about whether or not the team thinks it's appropriate.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it is. Again, it's the purview of the school committee to do two things with budget, to advise and to monitor. And that's, that, that's, if, if your advice is to do this, it's important for us to hear that. We need to put out all the obstacles on the, on the table to make sure, to make sure that we, you know, have a, I'm just using the food metaphor. To make sure that we have the information that we need as well, but also I think in advising us. You just need to hear all the, all the unintended consequences of, of doing it from our food service director, who I think has some thoughts, that issues. You know, when you, when present a great idea like this, it's, it's, it's wonderful, but then when you start thinking about the practical applications and the impact on a particular organization, it's just important that we're, if we move forward with anything, that we have those discussions. We do all the time with our, any decisions that we make internally, we always talk about unintended consequences. And I just think this is a particular item that although really exciting, I just want to bet it out a little bit. So that would be my, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so that's the answer to my question, let's have it discussed more in the subcommittee then. Okay, then I'm going to make sure it'll be a meeting because we have dogs, we have dogs, but didn't have lunch anyway.
Thank you.
Any for the questions on budget?
Sorry.
No, no, that's, that would be good. We need, that's, we, we need to like, and, and I mean, you're, this is exactly what the meeting is supposed to do. You identify that need and then identify the resources. Why don't those resources match off the stage? There's a discussion. There's one question, pretty sorry to just belabor this, but we, I don't, we don't normally go into some of the detail here, but on, on the detail page, the school budget summary report, there's a, there's a ledger item, something marked painted one, but it's clearly not painted one. But anyway, total other, and that is up fifty-five percent from twenty-two to twenty-three. It looks like it's up over a hundred thousand dollars. I just wanted to get an idea of what's going on with that line.
What, what, where?
It's on this thing. In the back of the presentation, it's page one. We have a account fifty, total other fiscal year twenty-one. We have one ninety-two K expended fiscal year twenty-two, we had one seventy-five expended. Then fiscal year twenty-three, we had two seventy-three expended. I think it's about a hundred thousand dollars.
Account zero, zero, five, zero?
Yeah. Let me show you where it is.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
On the other, so. Other could be professional development. It could be, I already have to go through. It's broken down in several different ways.
You don't have the answer.
I don't, I honestly, I don't have it off the top of my head.
So, so if you come, come back to us.
Yeah, that's a, that's a spike though, I see what you're saying.
I mean, it's cost of the chef.
I feel so when something's just called an other, like what is it?
You get a pinching on a slush fund.
Probably broken down somewhere.
It is broken down somewhere, I just, I just, I don't have it off the top of my head.
So if we can, if we just get a, a readout, I have to say, at some point, probably prior to the, the next meeting, we should discuss that.
So it could be, other could also, like I said, it could be spent, it could be professional development, it could be.
Well, yeah, you, you don't need to.
Van. Okay. Great.
Go back to.
I will come back to it. I will get your answer, other.
Thank you very much.
My guess is it's probably van drivers, guests, area workers, professional development, anything that doesn't fall.
And the question is one, what is it? Two, why is it?
Why is it? The other thing in food service, just to add, is they're working with, you know, we have, we have a large amount of money revolving and it's going to keep coming as long as we have free lunch. And, and that's an issue with all districts, that they have this excess of money in food service revolving. So they're now looking at high-top tables in the senior dining room. She's seen the cafeteria, upstairs and downstairs. So they're, they're looking at buying some of the high-top tables for that area. They're looking at taking some of the long tables, and I know all those like, and making the octagon, getting small octagon tables or round tables. And anything that's excess from here, Daniel, the Daniel principal, someone has already said, she wants whatever we can send that way for the round tables, because she doesn't like long tables either. She said some are okay, but she would like to have some round octagon tables as well. So, I mean, those are things that we're spending, spending down that money as well.
That's, that's a good example of how we balance the needs, because if we get a chef, then that makes my own round tables. So this is the, this is the activity we want to discuss.
The other thing that I wanted to talk about was the chapter seventy, and I know they touched based on it here, which was great. I did reach out to Desi several times and I spoke to Mark Abramson, who actually teaches a lot of the classes on chapter seventy forming of the foundation. And I, I, I talked to him, I probably don't have much, he should have told me. But he went online to all our numbers and took our kindergarten enrollment numbers, took our foundation numbers, took our requirement, minimum aid numbers, gathered it all up and said, okay, right now you have one hundred and twenty-four half-day kindergarten students. If you went to full day and rolled in that three hundred thousand dollars, you would add an additional sixty-two students because they have time. Sixty-two students would bring in more chapter seventy money based on, on per people spending. There's a, you know, there's a huge formula that goes along with it, but he said, we, you know, we fit all the areas that we need, you know, we have to spend a certain amount of money, we can't be under net school spending. And he said it would bring us in about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in FY twenty-five. So we would have to, we would have to front load the three hundred thousand. And then in FY twenty-five, we would see it come back in chapter seventy. So the five seventy, he said approximately, and then we have the sixty-one, thirty-nine percent split with the town, which brings us right down around three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we are hoping to hear.
So it should be a squash in FY twenty-five. He, like I said, he pulled all our numbers and questioned whether we were able to follow and, and he was pretty sure it worked for us.
That's, that's.
You missed the good news.
What's the good news? We hired a chef?
I just.
Free kindergarten is twelve hundred.
Great.
And FY twenty-five.
And FY twenty-five.
So. First thing, they helped us walk into what it was going to be impacted to be. And based on the addition of the students, we get approximately five hundred thousand dollars, which happens to split the town, which adds up to about three hundred thousand dollars, which is the same cost. So we have three, three.
Awesome.
One thing to think about, but I, and Mr. Carter, you're perfect, others might be helpful. I know we have a split with the town, but if it is net new revenue as a result of the schools, I wonder if that can be a way to discuss potential additional funding in other areas that the town.
I think it's something we should discuss.
So, you know, there is definitely a, a year we're going to borrow. But if we're, we're bringing in an extra two hundred thousand dollars for the, for the town, we, we have to split that as well. Great.
Just imagine our future, guys. Electric bus, free kindergarten.
Free kindergarten.
Yep.
Free lunch. Free.
Meals.
We've got. Give the account.
Put that down to zero. Ms. Owen, anything further on your report?
Yes. Yes.
All right. But we have approved, I believe, the budget with the inclusion of the full-day kindergarten.
So that's actually my next.
Okay.
My next slide.
We have to, I mean, obviously we have to vote on it on the fifteenth of March.
Yep.
So here's A, as I call it, our budget worksheet A, which has just the fifty thousand dollars of, of, through some full day K, which brings us probably to a four-point, oh, four percent increase. Worksheet B rolled in another three hundred thousand. Obviously, it brings us to a five-point, one-six percent increase over the current year. Typically, we'll be getting two, ten, three percent from the town. So this would definitely be something we have to discuss, we have to sell, we probably have to go to town meeting. If it's not within the range of what the town, you know, feels like it advocate to us. But this is definitely makes a difference here. And, and you know, there are still items on here that we could look at and say, you know, is this something we have to have this year or can it wait? This is our, this is the list that we're saying we need to move forward and get our scores up and just be a better, stronger district. So those are the two worksheets. And then the two seventy-two, for the increased supplies, materials, I do have a breakdown for that. Let's see. Share. See if I can find it. With me.
Can I ask a question about the, like, what are you going to show us?
So this is, the additional two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that is just kind of lumped here at the bottom for supplies and materials. You can see on here, I've compared years. You know, the health, the health budget went up by five hundred and fifty, they requested five hundred and fifty dollars more. Guidance, you know, was four thousand dollars more, so that's for the virtual high school price level. Science, you know, they want their software, they want their interactive virtual lab, they want more transportation for their science real trips. So it gives you a breakdown of what makes up that two seventy-two. I mean, the biggest chunk is the curriculum, which, which I know Dr. Scott has talked about. You know, it's elementary reading and middle school, it's middle, middle and high school math and music, kids in twelve curriculum, this is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that's our curriculum review cycle.
Correct.
So the idea is that we look at certain curriculum on a cycle so that we don't have a scenario, like, quite frankly, we have this team candidate will be needing a new ELA and math curriculum at the same time.
So that, that's kind of the makeup of what that two seventy-two is. I just thought, you know, the community in, in the committee might want to see what, you know, what's making a big difference. And a good portion of it is just accurate review and, and. Things that go on with it.
Just to clarify, and I think it's on here, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, because on our, I think it's on both budgets, but B, because I want free kindergarten, so that's what I'm looking at. Our director, the request for the director's data curriculum evaluation evens out with the loss of the director of technology and digital learning, right? Like that's a break-even, even though it's a big number, but okay, I just want to make sure that's a.
The same number.
Zeros it out, changing the title. Different title, but that's already like, that money already exists.
To wash.
We could technically post that now.
Right, I thought we discussed it, I just, I guess mathematically, it's already on here, I just.
Do you, we should not put it on there?
Like we already have that money.
I, I wouldn't put it on there as a, as a expendable item, now that I think about it. And this is.
Well, I'm just going to, they just to show, to be transparent, I wanted to show that this hundred and thirty dollars add of the director of the evaluation, but we're offsetting it down low with reduction of the hundred and three thousand dollars for the cut of the director of technology. I didn't want it to go unspoken. I wanted, I wanted it all different.
Well, it actually.
There'd be like a parenthetical aside that says an offset below, just so it's not looked at as a new request?
I guess the question is, is this a request? So whatever this document is used for, if, if that should not be characterized as a request.
It is, and I think though, one of the things that we ran into, we were really not trying to be non-transparent is that where we had Estra funds and we had some grant-funded positions, and then we funded them under the budget.
Yeah.
We were instructed to make sure we showed these.
Yeah.
And I think this is the spirit of it. The spirit is like, we never wanted to give anybody the feeling that we're hiding anything.
Yeah.
And when somebody sees a new position, you want to make sure they understand where it's coming from. Having said that, it, it really is something we've already, we've already kind of, yeah, encumbered for in the budget.
Yeah.
If that's what I were.
Yeah.
So I, I.
I'm just wondering if it could be, and obviously I'm not the financial director, and I will not pretend to be. However, as a person who is not the financial director, looking at this, I'm like, ooh, that's a big ask. And then, and then it's just a substantially separate line and area and category that the other thing is mentioned. So I just feel like.
It almost shouldn't be on there.
Like.
It's, it's not a new.
Appetite.
It's not, it's not a new budget item.
Is there just a way that we can note it and be transparent and not have it look like we're asking for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars? Because we're not.
Because this, this, I don't know, I share, I like the idea of transparency, but every other line, I don't want. is an increase of, but this is new stuff.
And it's.
And you're not asking for, you're not, you're not including existing things, you're not including, you know, administration salaries, existing future salaries.
We're not including the reading specialists that we had in years past that have.
I would, I would drop that off here as a request, feel free to note it somewhere else. Like maybe as a footnote into, you know, this figure twenty-three budget, this includes change. But, yeah, I do like the idea of making it clear that's not a, that's not a request for a new thing. The town is not approving in your position, giving us $30,000 more. But I, I see with math books out, I think.
I feel like reinforcing the neutrality of it is really important and not having.
Put it here, under, and maybe not under statute of our request, but not list the FTE and not list the hundred and thirty. And where it says add a 1.0 director, just say, reallocate 130 funding to.
Yes, I think re, having a reallocate, re, you know, redefined the position.
Like, for example, we, we added a special education teacher, is that, that's there, that's there though.
We had the budget for that already.
Right.
We had, so that already exists, that already, we had it this year.
It was, it was within this year.
Right, but I, I don't think that's any different than now that I think about it.
Yeah, I would just, I would just, if you feel the need, I'd add a footnote, but otherwise, I'd just drop it.
I think we should drop it.
Okay.
We have, we have, we haven't even covered.
I just want anyone to think we're asking for more than we're asking for, and then we don't get what we actually need.
Yep.
Some example?
Yes.
I, I totally agree with you for both sides, because I don't want someone to say.
Well, wait a minute, I liked your reallocation solution or like.
Where does your director of data curriculum and evaluation come from?
They can be transparent other ways. Uh, this, this, this has the potential to confuse the.
Yes.
I always think people, give people the wrong impression. So.
We just try to take it off and move on.
Yep.
I think that's, that's good.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
And we can actually probably take it out of our presentation too.
Ms. Owen, anything further?
No, I think, I think we went over everything, everything we didn't have, and everything else, I don't know.
Excellent. Any comments from the committee, questions?
I would just ask, during February vacation, is there a way you can paint the fitness up?
February vacation? I defer to see on that.
We do have a timeline. I don't, oh, of what?
Like, just to paint the place?
The process is.
Yeah, like February vacation.
Out of there.
There was a time we hit, well, what's the time, we have a timeline.
We have a timeline, I don't have.
Okay, well, yeah, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
We have, our next bullet, I'm going to tell you, any other questions, Ms. Owen? Thank you, Ms. Owen, financial board. We have here on agenda future capital needs discussions, is this a carryover from a prior agenda that we future capital needs, or is that?
Um, I think that was just something that you had at one point asked to keep it on the, on the list.
Right.
I don't think we have any.
I think we, I think we addressed that through our other comments.
Yeah, I think you just wanted that, and just so we always have that on.
Transportation, this is, this is, this is just keeping in mind, I addressed that in the opening remarks, so we know we have any.
Yeah, you may want to just reset that a little bit right now, only because I'm a little, I'm a little nervous with that audio going in and out, but I didn't catch the very beginning.
So the, um, you know, with the audio out, I'll just repeat. We know we had a transportation, you know, again, school bus rescheduling, you know, come out today. The school committee is aware of, obviously, the transportation issues and is working with the administration to try and fix it. Issue is the staffing, you may have heard in our discussion with, with our legislators. You know, we are, we are, this, this, not just in the district, but in the larger community in South Shore. There is just a shortage of human beings to drive buses. And so our transportation system is not as resilient as we want it to be. We are working on it, finding qualified people with the right licenses is proving a challenge for us and other districts. There's competition for people. But we are hopeful that we can find a pathway through it one way or another. So yes, we appreciate your patience and ask for it for a little bit further.
If I could add to that, I know that one of the considerations that I'm sure folks will come to the conclusion of is to try to disperse evenly the delays from bus to bus, so it's not always one bus route. As, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of the issue with that is just the way the routes run and the way we can combine them based on the buses. But we're going to look at that, and actually, as, as something I think we should be on to make sure that we're, we're trying to disperse it evenly across buses if we can, knowing that the routes are all GPSed. And that could be a potential issue with that. But I don't want anyone out there to think like, it's always one bus and we could shift it to another bus. Because we could do, we'll do that if we can, I, but I want to get all my information before I answer that, because I have had a few inquiries about that.
And I was thinking that, just passing on some two facts that I've heard. One factor to value is consistency and notice. So to the extent people know, maybe it's, you know, one bus gets a longer schedule for a long period of time. So parents are able to react to that and plan their week. As opposed to like, okay, now it's Tuesday, then Thursday, it's early, with having the, going back and forths can may be more challenging.
Right, they're almost too conflicting, you know, if you try to.
Trying to balance that, I know it's not easy, so I appreciate you.
It is really hard.
And some of it does, some of it is based on geographics.
Yep.
So some of the buses have more children and have longer routes, just by the location of the town. So the, the buses that have the longer routes can't double up.
And they have too many kids.
And they have too many kids.
So it's, so it's not an issue of just evenly dispersing, but I also want folks to know that we're really looking at that. That's also a consideration. But Chairman Dyer's comment about a consistent, you know, understanding of what you're doing, that also bears some, some.
Isn't that, I mean, that's difficult, because we, we don't have an additional driver. So, an example, today, last minute, family member, parent members would see driver has to go to the hospital. We can't plan, you know, we can't plan ahead for that. So that driver calls in and says, you know, I'm taking family member to the emergency room or in the, they're in the, I'm taking them to the hospital. So when, when one of our, just one of our drivers either is sick themselves or has an emergency, it, we don't always have to notice.
But one of the, one of the thoughts that the community brought up, that I do agree with, is moving forward, we have those emergencies that we will utilize, if at all possible, the phone system to get a message out that way. Only because I don't know that everyone is tied into their email like I am, for instance. And it's, it's, if you want to make sure you get noticed. But, but just to kind of talk about what you just mentioned, that really isn't the issue that we're dealing with right now. The, that, that happens and that compounds issues. But our issue is a consistent staffing issue. We are short drivers, period. And we just, we licensed drivers, we are, we are, this isn't, those matters exacerbate the issue. This is a, this is an issue of staffing and, and lack thereof. And we, we are really not able to overcome this right now.
Question about, but sorry. So with like, drivers who are taking tests through the R and A, right? Is there like, something that can be done to support them in that process? I just think of like, when I taught high school at a school that had a vocational program and kids are going through their CDL licenses and got reading services and we made sure that like, everything they needed to take a test was in place at the state level. Like, does anyone need accommodations, differentiation to pass this test so that we can get drivers? Are we doing everything to advocate for these drivers so they are getting what they need? Because that exists, and if they need it, we should be doing it.
They offer accommodations for the drivers?
Yeah. For taking, for test-taking, like, we did that, we made sure our students got that when they were doing, going for CDL. Yeah, no, I know, I'm just telling you that, like, because that's not something.
So I mean, we do provide the extent of training that they need.
Yeah.
Um, in the driving time.
Yep.
Um, and then we call the boot camp, that, you know, the week before their test, they are drilled on, you know, their book information and their skills behind the wheel. It's the state police who are doing the testing.
Okay.
Which I've heard is, is very difficult to pass.
I mean, it should be. It should be, because people are driving their children. Yeah.
I just, so I just know if anything, you know, anything else.
But we can look at that, though.
Like, it's.
But we can look at our training. And maybe there's a training, maybe there's more training supporting here. I don't know. We, we have had drivers who have not passed the test.
It, it's very, you know, it's like CDL, it's very comprehensive. So if you don't pass your pre-inspection, they fail.
Yeah.
You don't get to even get behind the wheel.
Yeah.
And, and you know, I've heard from different communities, you know, we're all having the same problem.
Yeah.
And the scheduling of the, rescheduling the test.
Scheduling takes a very long time. Most, but not all, are failing first time around. Some are on second and third time taking their tests. And, and some of them are saying, you know, some of the communication I'm hearing of, they're, they're not making it easy, they're, they're actually throw in like, I don't want to say trick, trick questions, but, you know, for an example, you know, one of the, one of our drivers had failed when they did their pre, the pre-test ahead of time, the pre-inspection of the buses. So if you have a nosed bus, part of that inspection is you have to raise the hood, you have to check oil, X, Y, Z, you have to check all this stuff. We have flat nose, so our engines are not on the front. So one of our drivers didn't go through the explanation of that pre-inspection of opening the hood and do all this because we don't have the hood to open. Failed, didn't even get to take, failed because they should have communicated that. If I had a bus with a front, I would do X, Y, and Z, but because I don't, I go to the rear of the bus to where the motor is.
Interesting.
So, I, I mean, to me, that, you know, if I didn't have a hood to open, then I'm not going to go through that pre-inspection with you. And maybe in my training, that should have told to me, do both scenarios, as if you have, you know, either or.
This is, this is a completely confounding problem. And I know we're not on, I mean, having to use Bridgewater, many are the same, but we, we're, it's, it's, it's really unique in that we can't get staff, we just can't get the staff.
And it, it, it clickpads it, it's statewide, so I did, you know, I did reach out to all my, you know, my groups, my other business managers and financials. And they're all saying the same thing. Frequently having to double up or pick up early or drop off late, parents are angry, parents are frustrated.
Some of them have bus companies that some of them are outsourced, it's the same deal.
Wrote me and said, we have first student. And we go through the same thing every week, but we don't have control over it because they're not, we're not setting the drivers of the routes. So, so even for a student who was prime vendor in this area is doubling up on a weekly basis or short drivers being late, being early. And parents, and that, that, that's the communication that I'm hearing from. So it's, it's outsourced and in-house, it's not just in one place. So I know, I want to say, I heard today that Situate, I think, I'd be Situate, I'm not sure, was considering outsourcing because they have such a hard time, but they have a hard time finding someone who they can outsource with.
Boston.
Which, we tried that too, you know, last year, we stopped for a student in local motion who does our medical life. I've called them and said, can you just take one route? I'm not looking to take the whole fleet, take one route from us. And the same thing, you know, when I called, there was a, I can't think of the bus company out in Bedford. She said she had over a hundred drivers on Monday. She said, I, I, I can't, I can't get my kids to school. So it's not, and I don't know, I mean, bus driver job, I don't, I don't know why it's so difficult. It's, you know, why there are more people wanting to do it, especially, especially for local. Because you drive for an hour and a half in the morning and then you have your midday off or you can work a second, you know, a job in between, which we do that here. You know, we have drivers that then come into the kitchen during the day, journals out. And then you're back behind the wheel, you know, one thirty to three thirty. So you can either work, you know, within the district doing something or you can go home.
We are going to be advertised on our website, get it out there.
And we've been advertising on school.
I know, everywhere.
And on D and the Globe.
Yeah.
I mean, but it's been three years now.
Well, it's interesting to know it's more on the driving portion and not the written portion that is the.
It's not the, it's failure action.
Okay.
I've recently sent out a, to local parents too. Yeah, to, to, to get drivers? Haven't done a while, I'll put it in my newsletter this week. Only because like, sometimes it's, they get, you really get really, you might find a parent.
We got some hits on the nurse substitutes.
Yeah, yeah, because like, honestly, well, we, we go indeed, but I'll send out a member to our, I'll send an email out to our members and we end up hiring members. Because they already know the club, they already know the.
There's anyone, I think, turn us to be one of the best. Would like to be trained to drive a bus and to take a wheel.
We'll train you, yeah.
We'll train you.
Yeah.
So you couldn't drive for a nicer community with nicer kids. The kids are awesome, so, I mean.
So that might be, I'm waiting, trying to do it internally. And we're, um, did you ever, is there someone that works somewhere else in this town that may also have a bus license? Have you ever checked that?
So we did, we did reach out to the seniors' centers. We had no, no.
Like, somebody that works at the DPW, like, I'm wondering if there's an employee of the class that may have a valid bus driver's license.
That's worth it, we, we did look at that, at one point we looked at that.
As a backup.
It's been something that we can do again, yeah, I mean, we're.
And then we, we do it. How about, how about the transportation good story? So I want to commend everybody in the category of transportation on the night the Walsh family's former house was on fire. We had called a bus. There were some challenges, they were met very well, I heard from a lot of people, they handled very well. I drove by the school and there was the principal, her leadership team way after hours waiting to make sure that we got it, so congratulations on that working great. Yeah, the drive, the two, we had two really tough scenarios. If you remember, we had the flooding of the streets the day before the break. And then we had the situation with the house fire. And our team is really good. Yeah, I mean, they, and, and hearing them communicate and that, the drivers we have are excellent. And they're safe and they're, they're, they're well-coordinated and they work well together. That, we just need more of them.
Right, yeah, they need to be.
But thank you for that.
They're really.
They did a nice job of that.
They're really.
And thanks to the community too.
Working double time.
Those messages were sent, the second one with the house fire, we had three minutes left. Like, we had three minutes to create that message, to get it out to people. So people who receive that message, thank you for your help and understanding. That was a whole community effort to not have that be a situation where somebody potentially walked into a situation and got hurt.
Yeah.
I want to diminish the, the wonderful nature of the way that was handled, but it is nine thirty tonight, I, I, I would rate it, we should keep on moving because it's getting late.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good over midnight if you guys.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, it was breakfast, we just maybe.
There was, we're almost there.
We're almost there.
So I think, I think we've, I think we've, we've gone down the road of transportation again, appropriate.
We have about.
In, in, I'm sure we're going into the school facilities, can you report, can you report? So then we'll go to our peer relations. I don't have any, my subcommittees, do you, do you ever have reports from their subcommittees or meetings?
We had a meeting yesterday, we already talked about it.
Yeah.
And then we have, we have a school facilities committee meeting tomorrow, I think.
Friday.
Friday. So we, I don't know if it's the news that we're not going to get the schools of this time around, it is.
Yeah, we just provide a report, we're going to meet, we're going to meet, so we'll provide a report next meeting.
Yeah, okay, fine.
So that's, that's that. There are no topics not reasonably anticipated by me. There are no minutes to approve at this point.
We'll have a pool of minutes for the next week.
Awesome.
I'll catch you up. I'll set you up.
On future agenda items, I know we have one on, on potentially the, the chef will, we'll put that up as the thing. Any other future agenda items you want to cover?
Are we doing our, we're going to Metco headquarters next?
Yes.
I'll get information. We have a, yeah, a little tour of the facility planned beforehand.
Excellent, so hearing, no further, there's no reason to move into executive session. So with that, I will entertain a meeting to. Mr. Keane, we got, got you there, you made it for the second, great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, the meeting is hereby adjourned, thank you everyone for watching, thank you for participating.
Thank you, thank you.
Didn't want to, didn't want to give the thirty minute.